Obviously, this is a joint work session here this evening between our Sandy City Council and our Sandy Planning Commission. I know we're very excited about this. Jeff, do you want to go ahead and do a roll call?
Absolutely. So I will start with the planning commission first. So Commissioner Carlton. Believe you're muted, sir. Yeah, I see you there, though.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner Lasowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hook. Don't see him yet. Commissioner Maithen.
Present.
Commissioner McLean Wensel.
Here.
Chair Crosby, I don't believe is here either. He's not yet.
He's on vacation.
Yeah, I think he's in Alaska.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Peitzel.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon. I think I said, there you are. We may have an issue with your audio. Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
I am here.
Counselor Hockenson.
Here.
And Mayor Polian.
Here. Thank you for that, Jeff. Quickly, we always start off for our city council going through tonight's agenda, just in case there's any clarity that needs to happen or questions that any counselor needs to ask staff before we kind of allow staff time to prepare before we jump into it tonight. So let's quickly go through that. Are there going to be any proposed changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, any questions on the consent agenda? All right, under resolutions, we have our public hearing for the 2021-23 budget adoption. Any questions before we get into that? All right, well, also then under old business have a public hearing on the master fee schedule update. Then we'll go into our water supply options discussion, the staff recommendation. Okay, then under new business, we have the pool exploratory task force appointments. We have the library advisory board appointments. And we have the contract approval for government relation services. Was there any clarifying questions before we discuss that tonight by council? All right, and then it's got a, all right, then we go into our report from our city manager and then our council and committee reports. So with that, let's go ahead and kickstart our work session. We have two items on our work session agenda at tonight. First is our joint work session with the planning commission to discuss our development code amendment priorities. And then discuss the draft parks and trails master plan update. With that, Jordan, would you like to get us started?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And first, I'd just like to say thanks for the planning commission and the city council for coming together in this joint work session. I think this is the first joint. I think we've had some, some trainings, combined trainings over the last couple of years, but it's been a while. So this is a good moment for, for the council and the commission to get together. There is two topics, and one of those topics, there's a couple of subtopics, so a lot to talk about tonight. And so we've allotted two hours for this work session between the two bodies to talk about a couple of important issues and, and goals of the city council. So really looking forward to hearing your feedback on both some of these development code modifications and policy direction on variances, but also with the parks master plan update. Kelly O'Neil will be going through a quick kind of presentation and talking in more detail about the staff report on the different development code modifications and prioritizing those development code options. Our goal tonight is really to kind of get some clear consensus from the, the two bodies, the planning commission, the city council, on staff working with the planning commission and then council moving forward on code changes. There's a few recommendations in the staff report that talk about sort of where we focus our efforts, where we think we should focus our efforts based on the input that we have received from the survey, but also in conversations with city councilors and planning commissioners over the last few years. I think we probably know what a few of those are, the plan development in removing or modifying the plan development chapters, a big one that we could talk about in, in the process and doing that in the next few meetings, but also some other code changes. We also just want to hear your ideas, too, any other ideas on things that we can focus on in terms of what we can accomplish this year for, for making code modifications. So one of those areas would be talking about clear and objective language and kind of doing the low hanging fruit in, in making modifications to the code where it's not clear and objective. And so we're happy to talk a little bit about that and, and some of that language that can be cleaned up over the next year, as well as some of these other recommendations. So hopefully by the end of this first hour, we'll have, I think, a consensus probably on planned developments, but hopefully then on a few other code changes that staff can focus on this year in cleaning up and working with the planning commission, city council to bring those back. And then also, one of the council goals, besides the overarching goal to be more proactive in managing growth, you know, we're taking on the comp plan, for example, and doing that, but also getting some clear direction from both the planning commission and city council on this topic of variances and, you know, how many variances staff are willing to entertain and work with developers, or if we should, you know, maybe be more narrow focused and sticking to our current development code until we have that comp plan updated and those new policies. And then eventually a new, you know, more substantial update of our development code. So we also wanted to start that conversation tonight to kind of, you know, spark the, the city council goal, progress towards that city council goal and this conversation with the planning commission. Kelly, do you want to go ahead and start the PowerPoint, share a screen and, and get rolling on?
Yeah, I mean, I think you summarize, I think you did a pretty good summary. I don't know, know if I really need my PowerPoint, but um.
I did the first slide, I think.
I could touch upon it in a little bit more depth, I guess, and I think what I'll do is kind of on a few of the things, since we have Mr. Crane here, is that if there's specific questions related to limited land use decisions, clear and objective, and any of the other things that were fleshed out in the staff report, that if you have more in-depth questions than what I can handle, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Crane in those situations. So there might be a few of those coming up, but let me, let me start the slideshow here. Okay, so I'm assuming everybody can see that.
Not yet.
Oh, really? Hold on. Okay, I think we can see that now. Okay, there we go. Okay, so as the staff report says, and a lot of this is from the staff report, but I know everybody's very busy, so some of it, it's kind of reiterated, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure to touch upon some of the main points in that staff report. So the framework for this work session, as Jordan already alluded to, was a council goal that was set about three or four months ago. And then there were some sub-goals to that. So the sub-goals were basically to have this meeting, and I think one of the things from that is to kind of meet more regularly. I think the last time these two bodies met in this kind of setting was about three years ago, so I think right before Jordan came on. And then the other two main takeaways are updating the city comprehensive plan and updating the development code, which we're going to be talking about tonight. And by conclusion of the work session, so about an hour from now, staff would like to have some consensus on a few topics. So the first one is consensus on whether you would like staff to proceed with removing the plan development chapter altogether, or just making some large modifications, because those are really two separate processes. Staff's preference at this point would be to just remove it in its entirety if people are uncomfortable with the plan development chapter, because we feel like if we just make modifications, we're still going to be faced probably with requests that are not really fully thought through. And we'd rather have a plan development chapter that's updated with the new comp plan, so it fits our goals and visions. The second thing we'd like to walk away is policy direction on variances, what we call sandy style design deviations. So that's modifications to chapter 1790, which go before the planning commission, zone changes and comprehensive plan amendments. So these four types are all kind of discretionary, and we just want some input from the planning commission and city council given to staff on how you'd like to see us process these, if you want us to recommend approval as often as we do, or if we want to kind of take a step back and maybe reevaluate that. And then the third thing is consensus on the code amendment priorities. We think we can probably do about four of them by 2021, by the end of this year. If, if the right ones are selected, or if the appropriate ones are selected, if you were to select, say, sandy style, for instance, you'd probably be down to about two code amendments that can happen, just because that chapter would take a lot longer for staff to go through. So the code amendment process is laid out in the staff report. It includes notice to DLCD. It includes work sessions typically, because those have been requested by city council and planning commission. And then it also includes public hearings, and this, the last public hearing typically is to adopt an ordinance, which that's how you change the code. So at a minimum, typically, we're looking at about four public meetings per code amendment. And then we also have the thing called a measure 56 notice, which is applicable when you remove uses within a particular zoning type. So if we decide to eliminate PDs altogether, that would necessitate a measure 56 notice, which is basically mailing everybody in the city saying that we're removing a use from their property. The clear and objective statutes, I'm not going to go into this too much, because I think the staff report goes into it pretty heavily. But basically, as Jordan alluded to, we want to go through the code and get the low hanging fruit, get the clear and objective code regulations that we know are not clear and objective and modify those over the next six months to year. Some of those will be occurring with what we would label as the code priorities moving forward, like chapter 1786, which is the parks development chapter. But basically, it's to, it's to avoid legal challenges and to make a clearer path for applicants when they make their land use applications. So that's what it mainly is. And if you have any questions about that, Mr. Crane can handle those a lot better than I can. Here are some examples of clear and objective. You know, it's, it probably begs the question in chapter 1764, does everything in there have to be clear and objective? But I just wanted to point out that something like in chapter 1764, like it says here in the underlying text, it's very hard for staff to evaluate whether an applicant is meeting those requirements, because it is so discretionary in nature. And then in chapters 1784 and 1786, I just pointed out a few well-known sections in the code that, you know, applicant attorneys are already aware of, that they're not clear and objective. And so these are just examples of things we need to clear, clean up. Limited land use decisions, if you were around during the Bailey Meadows hearings, Mr. Doofman did a good job of kind of explaining this. And this is basically, we have to make sure that different codes, or I'm sorry, different plans are expressly incorporated into our development code. So a great example of this is the Parks Master Plan in chapter 1786. It's not expressly incorporated into chapter 1786. It never has been since 1997. However, we have a really good opportunity to incorporate the new Parks Master Plan in when we go through adoption in the next few months here. So another example is the average daily trips. This was a big controversy with pushing too many trips down Melissa Avenue with the Bailey Meadows subdivision. And at the time, 1,080T was the maximum for local streets in the TSP, but it wasn't expressly incorporated into the development code. So that was an issue since we clarified, cleared that up. The other thing that Jordan alluded to is we want some more direction on variances, deviations, zone code amendments and comp plan. We do want to point out that typically, or historically speaking, in my tenures, at least in Sandy, we were kind of encouraged to try to get applicants to what we called yes, or get them to an approval. And so we use these different techniques, variances, deviations, code amendments, to help applicants navigate the development code process. So we're just wanting to know if that's still kind of the direction, or if you want us to kind of pump the brakes and tell applicants that it's probably going to be harder to get variances and deviations and zoning code amendments, but they're, you know, they're always welcome to apply. But usually, it's at the pre-op stage that applicants want to know, you know, the policymakers like planning commissioners and city councilors, how willing they're going to be to approve variances of zoned code amendments. So at that pre-op, the pre-op stage, we do need to be able to tell applicants whether there's a good chance or maybe a difficult chance of achieving these things. So staff recommends that by the end of 2021, we make modifications to chapter 1504, 1532, 1764 and 1786, as well as clearing up some well-known clear and objective issues. So those chapters, just so you know, 1504 is the building code chapter. There's some really old references in there, and there's also some stuff we need to adopt to be in line with changes that just occurred in April. So that's a pretty high priority, at least for staff. So we'd really like to see that set as a priority. 1532 is our sign code. There's a lot of First Amendment violations, and we've been working a lot with Barry Elsner and Hammond over the last three years to modify that code. So I actually have it in a format that I could bring to a work session within a few months. And that's really an administrative barrier, too. It's really hard to administer for my staff, so we would like to see that changed. 1764 is plan developments. 1786 is the parkland and open space dedication chapter. So that chapter is already kind of moving forward with changes concurrently with the new parks master plan. So we'd like those four chapters to be prioritized. And then we would also like to recommend that 1784, which is the improvements chapter, be a high priority when we adopt the new TSP in the first half of 2022. And I think with that, that concludes my slideshow.
I think the plan development wasn't listed on that, too, but that's something that we can, that's, that should be listed on there that we can bring back pretty fast.
That's 1764.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
So that, that concludes my summary. I don't know if you have any questions for me or any questions for Jordan, or any questions for our Mr. Crane on any of that legal stuff, but if not, we would just like to let you guys have a conversation and kind of start tackling some of these items.
Great. Well, well, thank you, Jordan and Kelly. A great presentation. So with that, why don't we start off with any questions in regards to the presentation that was just given? And if there's no questions, we can just jump into a discussion. Yeah, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I'm wondering what our timeline would be for adoption if we have time to adopt the changes the legislature comes out with later this month.
What changes are those?
The ones that are dealing with any land use issues like the building codes. There are some requirements for climate change that'll come in the comp plan, but there's like 15 bills that are pending right now.
I'd have to rely on Mr. Crane for that. I'm not, I'm not too sure. I do know that there's a Senate bill that's effective as of January 1st. And what that will do is effectively split, what it effectively does is it gets rid of our minimum lot size. So what it allows is for people to split duplexes, like in the SFR zone, for example, into two individual lots of record. I don't know, Chris, do you want to touch upon that?
Right, that's, thanks, Kelly. That's Senate Bill 458, and it says basically on any lot or parcel in the city that, that allows for single-family residential, you also have to allow for duplex, and that's a form of middle housing. And the bill says if, if the lot allows middle housing, you have to allow it to be partitioned or subdivided for additional housing. With, and it only requires the development to comply with a certain limited number of standards set out in the bill and nothing else. And one of the things that is not in the bill is a minimum lot size. So you could end up with very small duplexes or very small houses on very small lots. So that's, there are also procedural aspects of the bill that are troubling, but I won't get into those now. But as Kelly says, that bill, along with nearly ever, ever, the bill out of the legislature, does not take effect until January 1. So you may want to complete the tasks in front of you, and then we can turn to the tasks associated with the new legislation.
Thank you, Chris. Kathleen.
Um. Well, after that little bomb got dropped on us there, um, that's the first I've heard of this. Can anybody, I mean, I had a question, but I'm going to just first probably ask the question that everybody else is probably wondering about is where the heck did that come from? And is that adopted yet? And can we stop it? And what?
Yeah, it just, it just occurred.
If, if I may, it, it was brought by Habitat for Humanity, Housing Land Advocates, other social justice organizations. It was supported by the League of Oregon Cities, the Land Conservation Development Commission, and the Governor's Office, and it has been approved by both houses and signed by the governor, so it's law.
So why is the League of Oregon Cities that we are working with supposedly advocating eliminating minimum lot sizes and single-family residential as a zone in our towns?
Well, it's a whole, it's a whole nother conversation, but the, but the reason Kathleen, and I don't want to say in this publicly, the reason is because they're the league of where our dues have come from, of Oregon cities. And they get their dues primarily from the larger urban communities such as Portland and Eugene. And so that ends up being where a lot of our policy and advocating goes.
So I'll respond to that a little bit, Mayor, is that I think we need to be asking for exceptions for where we have already zoned for high density and medium density, unlike these other places that have not, that those lobbyists that we are hiring as of tonight or something, that we ask for some, for them to kind of work on some exceptions to that. But I'll ask my question now. Thank you for answering that. Jesus. Okay. Okay, this is a question for our lawyer, our legal representation. Um, let's see. What, in the, in the staff report, it talked about that's clear and objective and, and the needed housing and all that. Also, it had this comment about clear and objective standards, conditions and procedures can't discourage housing through unreasonable cost or delay. This includes development standards such as setbacks and building height that apply to housing at the time of building permit, as well as land use application criteria that apply to different land use application types. That's what the staff report said. My question is unreasonable cost and delay is not at all clear and objective. What is an unreasonable cost? What is an unreasonable delay? Are you saying that requiring building setbacks of 10 or 20 feet or whatever we have in there is unreasonable or not clear and objective? So if you could just kind of clarify for us, you know, my focus, I guess my focus is, is on cleaning up this clear, the clear and objective loopholes we have. But when you turn around and say, you know, some vague thing about anything that is, you know, unreasonable cost or unreasonable delay can't be done, it seems to kind of just fly in the face of clear and objective. So can you kind of help me understand the differences between clear and objective and this amorphous unreasonable cost and delay?
I'm sorry, is that a question for me then?
Yes.
Okay, so that phrase cannot discourage the development through unreasonable cost or delay comes out of ORS 197.758 subsection 5, and it applies to middle housing. It, that similar language is in ORS 197.312 that applies to ADUs. It has been interpreted by the Court of Appeals to apply to anything beyond regulating the location of the dwelling on the property. So setbacks are okay, because they prohibit you from building too close to the property line, but height limits are not okay, because they do not regulate the location of the dwelling on the property. So keep in mind, the, the other thing about that is Land Conservation Development Commission has adopted administrative rules to implement those two statutes, and they go into much greater detail about what is and is not allowed under that phrasing of citing and design standards that are allowed or not unreasonable, I would say. The, but again, those only apply to middle housing and ADUs. The clear and objective standard applies to all housing, all applications for residential development, all types of housing, single-family, multifamily, middle housing, ADUs. You can only apply clear and objective standards to an application for housing, including needed housing. But the unreasonable cost and delay standards only apply to citing and design standards and only for middle housing and ADUs. Clear as mud, right? I'm sorry, I can't be more helpful, but that's.
Now we found out that everything that is single-family residential can have duplexes on it and, you know, middle housing. And so, so now that, that applies to everything.
Well, Kelly, help me out here. I believe that because of Sandy's size, you're only required, the only form of middle housing that's required in Sandy is duplexes.
That's correct.
Triplexes, townhouses, cottage clusters, all of that, quads, are not required as a form of middle housing in Sandy. But a property owner is allowed by law to have a duplex on any lot that's zoned for single fam, that allows single-family dwellings. And you can regulate that, but only by clear and objective standards. So things like setbacks are obviously clear and objective. Anything mathematical is going to be clear and objective. You know, if you have to, a wall higher than four feet has to be engineered, you have to grade to a certain level. You're, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at the memo about parks, but the first section in your parks chapter is objectively, it is just clear and objective on its face. It reduces the developer's park set aside dedication obligation to a mathematical formula. It doesn't get any more clear or objective than that. But things like to the, you know, to the satisfaction of the city, or at the discretion of the city, or at the discretion of the, the development director, those kinds of standards are not going to be allowed.
Oh, are our design standards like Sandy's style or any of these other design standards that we have for duplexes?
Presumably, yeah. If you have a standard that says that every building frontage has to include at least three out of the following five features, that's a clear and objective standard.
We do have that, yeah.
Because it's unreasonable cost and they can't say it too much.
No, I mean, my response to that is I heard the same things from Detroit when they had to allow, had to include seat belts. Oh, it's going to raise the cost of cars, so no, we, we can't be required to have seat belts. Well, yeah, you can. That's not an unreasonable cost. So to compliance with clear and objective design standards, I don't believe it's an unreasonable cost or delay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Don, you're next up in the queue. I'm sorry, we have two Don's, wrong Don Carlton. Don Hockenson was in front of you for a little bit. Yeah, Don Hockenson, please.
Thanks, man. I, I want to first thank the planning commission for being with us today. I know that as a new council, we have caused you a lot of stress and some grief with some of our deliberations and possibly our direction. And, and I, I hope that the primary purpose for tonight is to give you all an opportunity to ask questions of us and get some feedback. Because if we dive into detailed policy discussions on some of these things, we might not solve that bigger issue. I, I think it's important that we're united with you, so I want to make sure that you get your questions of us and understand where we're coming from, even if on some of our recent decisions and discussions.
Thank you, Don. I'll go to you now, Don Carlton. One thing I will say that kind of, kind of piggyback on what Counselor Hockenson said was, remember in the staff report here on page two of this section, we've got our survey, survey results as to how some of the planning commission or counselor voted, but you know, they're looking for some direction from us. So if you need guidance on kind of topics that we want to tackle here as a larger group, you know, they're all spelled out pretty good there on page two. Don.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly, you just mentioned, to me, the, the comment that you want to take a lot, like sending 500 square foot lot that a duplex is on and put into lots, it's just to me extremely logical, because if you're going to have two separate owners, you're going to have two separate lots. Otherwise, what's, I mean, how do you do a duplex and have one side owned by a person? I guess then a rent the other side. You follow me? It's just practical to me that if you're going to have a duplex, they each got to sit on their own property, probably with a line with a common wall agreement. So I guess that doesn't bother me. It just seems to me of something to just follow if you're going to allow a duplex.
Thank you, sir. Carl.
Oh.
Carly, we started to hear you and then you got muted, but there you are.
Okay, there it is. A couple of things. I heard we're talking about some of the politically charged rules. I'll go that right first. To me, I think some of those things like this House Bill, excuse me, Senate Bill 458, it's kind of a done deal, or we're going to have to do a lot of fighting for the changes in that particular item. Those sound to me like it will take up a lot of our air, and I think that we. and I think that we wouldn't really want to focus on those kind of things. Rather than that, let's focus on the stuff that we can change and put into effect some of these things that are bothering us. I think that's really the place we should spend our time. So some of the things that are either signed by the governor, going through the two legislative houses and are headed for the governor, I think it's pretty hard to take that on and feel very comfortable about solving something. So that's kind of me for me, I would say, let's not play with those kind of games. The other one, excuse me, the other one that I thought I heard from Kelly was something that I think I've said a couple, three times, and maybe I pushed some of the other. Action, I think that as a Realtor, we have had the reputation for many years about being tough on developers, very difficult to work with and not very friendly. And the last, oh, probably three years, this find a way to say yes has moved that away from those kinds of attitudes. And I hear more and more people saying, well, let's look at Sandy. There's a lot of opportunities there because the Planning Commission has moved away from this difficult, hard to understand, different changes that will make it difficult for a developer to come in and do something. And when we start moving chains around, changing is always a difficult thing. People are uncertain about what that's going to mean in terms of their finances. So changing some of those drastically, making a left-hand turn and making some of these variances more difficult to to accomplish, telling developers are going to have to jump through more hoops, I think is a difficult direction to go to. So I'm an advocate of finding a way to say yes. Maybe there's a way to modify some of that. But I think it's important to be able to find a way to get some of these developments through. We're really in such short change. Our affordability is really being constrained right now because of our lack of inventory. So I'm at this point an advocate for finding a way to be a little more, maybe not as much, but at least on the friendlier side of letting developers come in and work our way through to some of these developments that make some good sense.
Thank you, Carl. Ron.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Paulin. And thank you for everybody being here tonight. I'm a little surprised at the duplex House Bill two thousand and one. That's we've been hearing about for a year, and now it's kind of like it's it's here and we're just, I think, ready to deal with it. But I want to bring up in terms of things to this on in my tenure here, Sandy's style is taking up the most time in terms of looking at the different projects. But then our tree ornaments that we have for development is, I would say, a close second. So I'm just here kind of advocating for time being spent to revise the tree ordinance for new developments, retention trees, etc. Going Carl's point, I think it's one of those really hampering the development of existing land within the city just for the sheer fact of having trees is almost a hindrance as opposed to paralyzing. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but getting the tree committee back together again to come up with some new language, it may not be perfect, but I'd like to see something better than we have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Jeremy.
Yeah, thanks everyone for joining us. I think we only have thirty minutes left on this topic. Is that correct?
No, we're we're well, we're going till eight. So we have this and one other topic, but this is also taking up of our time, so.
The park. So in that, I know, you know, from what I read, we we have some things set out, and I guess we're being asked on these topics where we prioritize staff's time as a council and a planning commission together collectively. And so the, you know, I guess I'd like to see us kind of make sure we don't miss this boat of this opportunity where we're together to talk about these twelve items. And I'm sure we could throw in another one if one's missed. But time is going to fly by with so many people. So I mean, I mean, everyone wants to speak. We're all we're all a lot of speakers. But I'm going to try to try to be more quiet and listen to the rest of you all as well. But I think that we have some that will rise to the top and maybe already have. And maybe I hope that we can accomplish that tonight, so.
Thank you. I'm going to go to you, Hollis. One thing with throughout just to try to start pushing conversation is is you guys, I've had so many council meetings interrupted with people furious that we haven't discussed getting rid of planned developments or furious that we haven't done clear and objective standards. And yet we're thirty-five minutes into our planning and council meeting, and no one has said if they want to get rid of planned developments yet or not. So let's get pushing along, guys. Let's get moving here. Hollis.
Okay, well, I'm not going to go there, so I'll let somebody else go there. I do think it's important to underline two things that are on my mind. One is the tree retention issues and the tree committee. And I will say it's a very fair thing to say that during the COVID pandemic, we've really lost traction. I have been working with Emily and at the city, and we are getting that moving again, and we both made a commitment so to really move on that because it's important. We're a tree city, and once those trees that have been around for a hundred years or eighty years or even fifty years are cut down to make it more profitable, and once those are cut down, we can't get them back. So I I did want to just bring everybody up to date that we do know we lost some traction, but we're picking up speed again. And then also, I've been around, I was on a lot of different committees as a citizen for the Sandy style, and I know that there's pushback from businesses and and the community or and developers around the costs associated with that. And I would I would argue that our city is becoming much more attractive to people. And a lot of those developments you see coming out here are because Sandy looks good. And so I would really hate to see us lose, you know, any of that. I I think it's reasonable because they can say it's expensive. They're still building here. So those are the two things I wanted to say with everybody present.
Thank you, Hollis. Appreciate that. Let's go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, thank you. So to the mayor's point, I would like to bring up, so I'll just go ahead what I'm in for. I would like to see planned developments removed from our building code. I think that they are they allow, I'm not saying that's a never, but right now they just allow this, as we almost saw, or may see it allows an option to deviate from our code. I have to say, I disagree with Carl pretty good on that on that topic. I don't think our job, I don't think that our staff's job is to be yes people. I think our job is to sit here and make clear and objective code that we can build the city for and to build it around what our citizens want and what is best for our city. I'm sorry, Carl, not what's for best for development. Yeah, we could slam apartment complexes, we could we could build houses, but that's not necessarily what's best for the citizens that live here and the livability of our community. And so that's where I think we should be going with that. The last thing is Sandy's style is a great example of that. Sandy's style costs money. It's 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 you can make an argument, it's to a hindrance of the businesses. But at the end of it, it's a profit, it's it's a better, it makes our community better. And I would say the same argument is making by making these objective, clear and objective standards that developers have, it makes it better so they can develop our community in a style that we want to see. So there's my thoughts on that. I think I covered everything.
Thanks, Rich. Appreciate it. Kathleen.
What he what he said first, and I would just, you know, yeah, the the planned unit development elimination. And then the second one for me is, you know, and I agree with Hollis about, you know, the tree committee and and probably kind of getting into that stuff. But it's not it's not as urgent for me as these clear and objective updates. And my concern is that we're getting appealed or threats of Luba appeals and things like that because our code is not, you know, some of our code is not clear and objective. And I don't know, you know, I know there's the park one. I know there's, you know, a couple more, but I don't know exactly what those are. I expect Kelly knows what those are, and I expect our legal team can take a look and see, you know, kind of just go through and with a highlighter and say, not clear and objective, not clear and objective. I'd like to see that, you know, quote unquote, just quick audit done as to which ones are not clear and objective so that we can then kind of go and say, well, these are the ones that if we don't make these clear and objective right now, we're going to lose, you know, we're going to lose a case. We can't enforce this code. It's going to mean that we're going to be stuck with some, you know, big, huge turd in the punch bowl kind of thing, and we don't want that. And so, you know, when I see things like the sign code or, you know, some of the other things, the dark sky ordinance and stuff, you know, I'm not seeing the urgency of those compared to these clear and objective things to make sure that we don't end up with development that we don't want, especially at the way it's getting rammed down our throats from the legislature. So the clear and objective codes, you know, the planned development number one and the clear and objective codes that that are urgent and, you know, that are causing us problems is number two for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. I agree a lot, especially with the prioritizing, absolutely on that end. One thing just to push conversation on the planned developments, playing devil's advocate here a little bit is is like someone explain to me why the overall bad taste left in people's mouths after this last process? Because those projects got voted down, okay? It allowed the developer the opportunity to go outside the box and do a planned development to put to make the case that their planned development was going to benefit our community by some of the things they were presenting, you know, with getting some of the variances they were asking for, and we decided it didn't do that, right? So it got voted down. So what is wrong? So and, you know, just explain to me as we're going around is what is wrong with a process that still ended up meeting your end objective of not allowing, you know, that development to go through in the way in which it was presented? Because it's not like we ended up with a development that we all didn't want. It didn't go through, you know, it worked through our democratic process. So I'm just, you know, wanting to kind of push that and bring that up a little bit. Carl, I think you're next in the queue.
Yeah, unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm going to say that I think that the planned developments are something we want to keep in our community. And I think there are some things within the planned development process that I'm not very comfortable with, some of the extreme variances and the large number of variances I'm very concerned about. But for me, a planned development gives me a chance or a developer a chance to be able to do something ingenuity, look at some ideas that are a little bit out of the box. If they are not agreeable, then we have a chance to say, no, we don't want that. But why would we put imagination on the sideboard and ask those folks to just come in with cookie cutter, one after the other, the same way, the same time? All of that seems like that's not something that we'd want to do in Sandy. We are kind of an ingenuity of kind of a city. We have done the Sandy style, and it's really been beneficial for more than just the developers. I think the developers whine about it because it is more expensive. But if I talk to the residents, they love the idea that we're in that style, and they look at it, and I get lots and lots of comments from people passing through that know about Sandy, that that Sandy's style is great. Why would we do the same thing to the development stuff? Again, not just letting it continue on the way it has looked at in the past, but let's ask the developers do something ingenuity once in a while. That's my opinion.
I was muted. I'm sorry. Jan, you're next up on the queue. Thanks, Carl.
Okay, I wasn't planning to speak to planned development. My concern is, again, the clear and objective guidance for the ordinances. But also, I would like to see us deal with the building codes because we're in an area where wildfire continues to grow, and we need to start thinking about roofing materials, green materials, different ways to do things. So I would put fifteen oh four on my list as well as clear and objective. And I also would like to see some more innovative planning such as the village concept or something of that sort that fits what we have in the city so far as blending into our own city's style, but allowing some different concepts where commercial and business can be combined. I mean, commercial and residential. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Jan. I'm Don Carlton.
I guess I put my hand up, Mayor Paulin, just going to tag on what you said. You know, we only have a little bit of time, I think, left here if we're going to provide adequate time for the parks plan. So my suggestion is we can debate stuff, but I don't think we have the time allocated to do it. I think the quickest way to get past the planned development is just to do a straw poll. And I think the argument that Kelly made was a good one, which is it's poorly worded. That was the problem, number one. Because it's poorly worded, you have two choices, fix the words or get rid of it. And then through the comp plan revision, let that concept come back in and then build it right. Nobody could tell me when we started it, because it was put in in nineteen ninety-four, I believe, why it was even there. I my deduce that I have, I thought it had a purpose. I explained it to Rich, my opinion, and I think there were a few words missed, one or two words missed that created the problem. So far as I'm concerned, I hear everybody kind of nodding. We can debate and talk about it, but to remove it, and if it's a good idea, bring it back in with the comp plan, and then we can get on to the next item on the agenda. Because that's what Kelly wants. Kelly wants to know what to do between now and Christmas.
Thank you, Don. We'll move on to the next Don, Don Hokinson.
I concur. Yeah, the reason the planned development was problematic and the reason that I think we caused frustration is because how we as a council ultimately interpreted a couple of those clauses totally flipped the allowability of the proposal. And so it's it's not clear we other Don is absolutely right, so I just support that.
Thank you. Ron Lesowski.
Mayor, you asked why it failed. I think it failed because of the the planned developments that came before the views. Because the planned development allows a certain amount of latitude for the developer, and I think it failed just the latitude was a little too wide. So there was concessions that can be made. And I think, again, the the concessions and what they're trying to do made a lot of sense. But when you go from a single-family residential and then you're adding apartments on top of it, I think that was the underlying, there was just too much latitude. And there again, trying to have clear and concise objectives. When the planned development allows for that interpretation or latitude, there's nothing clear and concise about it. You can kind of do whatever you want. But I'm going to second Commissioner Carlton. Now, let's take a straw straw poll vote and move this along, see where we're at on it.
Sounds good. And just to go back, just my my overall point was is the checks and balances worked, right? It's not like that development moved forward. That was kind of my overall case. If you don't like it, it wasn't allowed to move forward because it goes to planning and then council and and so on, so.
And if you looked at from us as commissioners, we voted, and there was the vast majority of the elements of it we liked. But then there was just certain kind of showstopper ones that we were all like, you know, this is too too much encroachment. Anyway.
Yeah. I I see both Richard and Jeremy in the queue. Do you guys worry if I is it a big deal if I go to a straw poll before you're allowed to speak? Or do one of you want to speak before I go to a straw poll?
I'm good. I was just going to agree with it and say, yeah, I like planned developments. I just think it was too broad, and we need to fix that.
Okay, perfect. I'm guessing you agree with that, Rich?
I do, and the broadness is what gets us, right? That's not broadness isn't clear and objective, and that's the problem with the way our state law is versus our city law. So we can't have both, unfortunately. I agree, democratic process would be perfect, but it's not it's not feasible in this situation.
Good. So thank you. So the way I'm going to step this straw poll, though, is is who is in favor? Here's how I'm going to pose the question, and I want someone to speak up if you don't like the way I pose it. And that is is that let's get rid, we're looking to get rid of planned developments until we have an opportunity to revisit the issue of the comp plan process. Is everybody okay with me putting it that way? Okay, great. So who's in favor of getting rid of planned development in our code until we have the opportunity to revisit in our comp plan process? Provide me with a thumbs up, please, knowing that this isn't a vote, it's a straw poll. Okay, who would be opposed to that? Okay, great. That's pretty clear direction. Wonderful. All right, let's go down, let's move forward with, I'm going to call it business friendly. Just real quick on that. So, you know, we're talking about the code and, you know, how and how we're going to deal with variances as they come in. You know, this really comes up a lot, at least when it has risen to my desk. It has come up on commercial primarily when you have a commercial developer, not necessarily a residential developer who's coming in where they're dealing with some different variances, dealing with the Sandy style, especially if if that developer finds themselves lucky enough to be along Highway twenty-six in that corridor, is really where you really get some different issues. I, for one, you know, I love the Sandy style. I think it's put Sandy on the map. At the same time, you know, just to kind of address what Rich said earlier is is I think jobs do benefit our neighbors here in this community. And so when we can appeal to a good And so when we can appeal to a good commercial business to come in that's gonna provide nice jobs or maybe it's an additional amenity that's, you know, our residents get that they weren't getting before that private business came in, I think there is some leeway that we may wanna provide if it's a good enough opportunity for our community that at least that also upholds the Sandy style and the integrity of that code. Uh that's just a couple of my thoughts. Was there any additional discussion on, kinda, lack of a better word, the, the business friendly within the planning department? Well, there was a lot of discussion before I spoke. Yeah, Kathleen, go ahead.
You know, I am for me, I think it's a matter of being um the position that I feel like our, our planning staff and they're doing, you know, ye- yeoman work. I mean, they've got so many um projects coming in and they're working extremely hard. And I think what's important though is that they, they're the ones that kind of help set the future of Sandy. And they're there to represent all our city residents for the future of what our town looks like. And when we start issuing um variances or um deviations and things like that, the hard part about that, you know, is that, you know, by and large, I agree. I think our, our code is, you know, pretty good. It, it could definitely use a little tweaking, but by and large, it's, it's pretty good. And I think it's, you know, what we wanna see in our city. And when we start issuing variances and deviations and things like that, it makes it very difficult for the next developer that comes in, oh, we gave this guy, you know, uh, uh, let him tweak it or get away with more. You know, and it just kind of creates this, what do you call those? Um, you know, it's almost like your kids, you know, when you said yes, you know, yes to that kid, when, you know, it, it's a fairness issue. And so that's where it really becomes difficult to have any consistency um in between the developers. You know, there's winners and losers. And so I am very concerned that two things. One is that our, our code has kind of that intent. And I don't know if that's a clear and objective intent or, or how you word it, but, you know, but it has some intent. And if a developer can kind of meet the intent of that code and use some creativity, and that's where I think our planning staff can really help them in that um early stages to meet the intent, but, but that may require variance, then I, I think that's okay to go ahead and issue variances. We have some criteria that if it's based on topography or something, other thing, you know, we have some criteria as to when variances are appropriate. But what I've seen is that some of these variances are more a function of it costs us too much. And, and that's of course not said clearly, but that's apparently what, what it appears to some people as. And so I really wanna make sure that we're being consistent with our code and that we're meeting, that we're providing and allowing some variances where we can still meet the intent of the code or there's some really good rationale as to why we're, we're gonna, you know, not require that because again, then that sets the standard for the next people that come in. Um and it just kind of starts diminishing our, our bar gets lowered, lower and lower. So that's my take on it. Thanks.
Thank you Kathleen. Um Don?
Um, okay, I got a couple of quick things um to go through here. You know, there's several different types of these and some are at the director level. And so I think as far as what you're, you're saying about being developer friendly is mainly related to that. If a, if a request for a variance deviation, whatever, gets to the planning commission, it's pretty straightforward. We have criteria in our code that says, this is how you evaluate those. It's up to the applicant to present the case on why they need that. And that, you know, one of the, and for various particularly, the very first criteria is, is not of the developers making. You know, that a lot of them, that just throws it out. And it's because obviously the code is built in one way. You try and put a square foot, you know, building on a round area and so it makes some changes. I give you plenty of examples, given my fifteen years on the commission. So we have a process. So I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure what we're, we're talking about here other than director level decisions. Because I think when it gets to us, we apply the criteria. We have seven people. Uh we, we sometimes disagree. Uh but, you know, all the votes are not seven zero. But, you know, we just go by the criteria that's in the code. So um I would share, at least with Kathleen, if we've been reminded many, many times by staff that each application stands on its own. That bottom line is, a person comes in and says, you should give us a variance because you gave Joe Blow a variance. They can say that, and they will say that. But we apply the criteria in the code based on the application they provided to us. So we need to be mindful of what you said Kathleen, but if we do the process correctly, that, that shouldn't be a problem. There shouldn't necessarily be a slippery slope that we, we put ourself, self on. Um, so that's a good, for the last thing I just, I throw out, particularly to, to Jordan or Jan mentioned. I spent, uh, I've spent thirty-five years of my career in wildland fire planning. So when you, if you wanna have somebody free to help you out with anything related to wildland fire, defenseful space, structures, suppression, all that kind of stuff, give me a call. Um, you've just hit my wheelhouse and I'd be glad to help. So um, those are my comments on, on that. So I don't, I, I don't see it as a, I don't see what's being shared here as a big issue. What I do know is that Kelly has some proposals that we continually see, like the, the left, the slope of roofs in industrial. We continually get requests for changes. So there may be certain things that we might just wanna go ahead and change because given the experience now roughly ten years with the Sandy style, yeah, that's probably not needed, you know, so. Anyway, I'll go back to you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, sir. Hollis.
Um, boy, I wanna just agree with Kathleen, agree with Don. Um, I, I did wanna just say, first of all, I don't think we have nearly enough time. What we need is at least a half day together. Because there's so much going on. Um, I did wanna just put it out there as well. I think the fire issues are huge. Just traveled down in California. You know, we're, they're looking at forty to fifty percent less water. We've got huge drought up here. And it made me really nervous when those houses in Tigard a couple of years ago kind of spontaneously combusted one, heated up the next one, which he did up the next one. And I went to a fire suppression class on that. And again, I know Don knows a lot more about this out in the, out in the wilderness. But I am concerned about um the developments that we have and how close we let people build together, so. Because of fires. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right. Thank you. And just remember, everyone, we're looking for some priorities for staff to, to work on. We've gotten one. Um, Chris?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. To that point, um, I just wanted to say, looking at the list of twelve policy options that all of us did a survey on and it's ranked based on our own votes, I would like to ask that there's great consideration giving to moving up fifteen thirty-two because uh it seems like it could be moved quickly, uh based on the staff's report. They already have a draft in place that's gone through legal counsel, so that can, that can be enacted pretty, fairly rapidly. Also, my personal preferences are seventeen eighty-six and fifteen oh four, uh park land use and building code. Uh we, we see a lot of complaints or concerns that come across our desk. And then to add on to what Commissioner Carlton said, as a planning commissioner myself, I, I don't believe it's my responsibility to make the code. It's just to enforce the code. So I read it, I read the book and I, I listen to the presentation and then I make it applicable or not. And if it's not applicable and to the point of so many things that have been said already, if the code is not accurate or not clear and objective, it's our responsibility to point that out and ask the citizens to bring forward to your uh council that it be changed. And we can make suggestions for that. And that's what this priority list is set forth. So I would ask that you um move seventeen eighty-six and fifteen oh four to the top along with fifteen thirty-two and then set direction for the planning director and the planning department to, to move forward on a priority basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. And I agree with all those suggestions. Um, Don Hokinson.
So I, I'd like to second Chris, provided that you meant at the top underneath plan development removal. Okay, then, yes. Um, I really like the uh, that, that those of you on the planning commission have these very specific changes that you'd like made. I don't have that planning experience. So what I'm looking for, something Rich brought up in a previous meeting, is for staff to consistently bring to us and schedule and use our time appropriately with decision level things. You know, these changes that, that we've prioritized, I think you, you have a, a pretty good set of lists. I think the challenge now for Kelly and staff is to utilize the limited council time as best you can by bringing them fully baked, ready for some decisions. I mean, if you do need a yay or nay because you're just not sure, you can come to us with, with a quick work session or even a straw poll type thing. But I think we can get this more effective because I'd like to see us working on solar and electric cars and all kinds of things that we should be putting in our code, but we have all these problems we gotta deal with first. So I hope, Kelly, that you're able in the next couple of years, using us in this fourth, two to four times a year cycle to get us to a baseline where we can start getting proactive in front of things.
Thank you, Don. Um Kathleen? Remember guys, everyone, it's seven oh one and we still wanna get to the, uh, the, the Parks and Trails Master Plan discussion as well.
I'm gonna suggest that the next um focus be these things that are the clear and objective code that is causing us problems, whether it's seventeen point eight six, seventeen point five four, the specific area plan, the things that we're gonna get sued on if we try to implement them. Um, or we're gonna get threatened to sue or something. We need to kind of make those, I guess, from where I'm standing, I would like to see the staff focused on eliminating the plan development and cleaning up the loopholes on the clear and objective stuff pro, pro, priority in front of even the comp plan stuff. And get that done in the next few months. And if we need to hire some extra, you know, use some of that comp plan money that we've kind of set aside, use, you know, to kind of clean this up because I know you guys are so busy and you're getting just slammed, I guess I'm okay with, you know, getting some help in to kind of get, get these things off the docket and just get, get those solved.
Thank you. Um, Ron? Ron, you're muted.
Thank you. I'd like to um second Commissioner Maiteen's suggestion on adopting the four, the additional three were laid out into the plan development, to adopt those. And also to put in there for the committee, whoever, however it's put together is some type of deadline. But let's not get a hard date to come back to council and commission with at least a first draft on again, but I don't know how many hours on it. And I think we can, we wouldn't have, I mean, we may not be able to solve it all, but at least we can make it better. And then the last one is, when we come through in terms of changing Sandy style, losing it, like Don had said, if it's something on the roof pitch we need to change, great. But when we have the applicant coming in saying, I'm bringing livable wage jobs to the city of Sandy, I think it's fantastic. But they're saying in such a way that you should bend for me a little bit this way because, because of this. And our thing, our job is just to apply the code, okay? And it comes down to the little push of, well, maybe make a little more concession because this is a, this is a good business. And I, I don't wanna be put in that position to decide what's a good business versus another one. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich?
I was kind of hoping we can move forward with that straw, kind of a straw poll like we just talked about with what Commissioner Maiteen said. In addition to though, I wanna, I, I was, I guess my hopes for a meeting like this was really we don't see a lot of the variance issues that come to council. And so I was really kind of hoping to hear from uh the planning commission and, and really staff on what issues they see that need to be addressed. The reality of it is, uh, we keep kind of, we wanna get control, but control is being taken away from us down in Salem. And so we have to set this, I, I think we have to be clear, we have to be objective. We kind of have to draw a line in the sand and we have to be able to empower the planning commission to enforce that. And if that doesn't mean being a yes, uh pro-business or anti-business, it means being fair and objective in what we do. And I, I think that's super important to remember moving forward. But anyways, I, back to what we were talking about, I would like to, I, I totally agree with what pretty much everyone has been saying about the priorities. And I was kind of wondering if we could do the straw poll on that and then move forward.
Yeah, let's go for it. Uh, let's just do a straw poll on what Commissioner Maiteen had suggested. Um, basically it was sticking with the way that we had laid everything out, but bumping up the sign code that could get done pretty quick as well as I don't have it off the top of my mind. Chris, do you, do you wanna go through it again real quick?
Yeah, it was just moving seventeen eighty-six up, uh, the, up to the top, up near the top. And fifteen oh four is already there. So it's really just taking fifteen thirty-two and stacking it in the number two position. And then putting seventeen eighty-six either in the number three or number four spot, either in front of or behind fifteen oh four.
Pick, pick. We're going into a straw poll. You gotta pick, Chris.
Oh, I say, I say it's number three then.
When does the clear and objective start come in?
Oh, and I was, I'm sorry, and I'll make one comment to that, counselors. Um, all the clear and objective standards that the commission doesn't have are in these codes listed, which is why they're all listed there. That's what we did the survey on. These are the codes we have the most problems with. And they, these are the ones of what we need the, the planning department to tackle to put clear and objective standards within.
Yep.
Right, but the, the baseline for some of these are like twenty twenty-two on, on this. So that's kind of what the concern.
All of those are existing codes. I don't know anything that's twenty twenty-two in there. Those are all current codes that need updating. The planning department is the, the only one that's, we're asking to be taken down so that we can have time to rebuild it in the new comp plan.
All those in favor, remember this is just a straw poll. It's not like a vote. Uh, all those in favor, thumbs up. Opposed, thumbs down. All right, awesome. Thank you, Chris.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Yep.
So one of the things, I think Chris hit it on the head, is so one of the reasons I wanna move forward with stuff like the sign code is because we have it pretty much ready to go for city council to see. And it's a really, it's a bear for my staff and I'm losing a staff member. And so with the current sign code, I spend, and my staff spends way more time trying to analyze and interpret it. And once we have a better sign code, we can save a lot of time there and then it frees me up to actually be doing code amendments. So sometimes it's the priority because it will help the whole department and therefore kind of free up my time to then be focusing on the clear and objective and other things.
Perfect. Thank you. And Don?
Yeah, um, yeah, my prior comments, I was, I was kind of on the first page and uh they mainly related to the variance comments or whatever. You know, again, I did a thumbs up. I support the priorities that Kelly placed out um on that first, um, on that first page. I would like to make a couple of comments related to the, to the urban forestry, which is really the tree committee. Um, I'll do my best to say these carefully. Bottom line is this, if you take some history and you go back to the spring of two thousand nineteen, that's when this topic came up. And the committee was formed by, uh, by council, et cetera. Um, if you go back and review the tapes of those, I was a little bit of a jerk in saying, I wanna know when I'm gonna have something back. I'm a very, done tons of committees. First of all, a committee more than seven is designed to fail. Um, the bottom line is a committee that doesn't have a solid deadline with a consequence of failure is a problem. So I was told it was gonna be September. So September of two thousand nineteen is when we were supposed to have recommendations back. I agree, when COVID came up, all of that stuff was a problem. But the reason it came up is that I want you to calculate back. We are two years since that committee was formed. I asked for a result in three months. So my point is, I would like the council to work with the, that committee. That committee, I think, is, with my understanding, has got a decent number of folks and I think it's too large. The second is, everybody on that committee has to be committed to consensus. And that there are deadlines, a solid deadline be established, with strong leadership. Because that is a bigger problem, I think, when, than you folks realize, if you look at our, all of the the developments that come to us, on every development that comes to us, trees and retention trees are part of the discussion, everyone, okay? And so um we can move forward if we have some clear direction there. Now, I have some opinions and I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into those necessarily. Because my number one concern two thousand nineteen was process. Get it done. Okay. And so I get all these excuses, somebody couldn't meet, on and on and on. I'd like the council to give that committee a deadline. And if they don't provide something to you by that deadline, sunset them. And I'll be glad to lead the committee with a deadline that will get it done. So we need to, we just can't recycle stuff. We need to get it done. No excuses. Get it done. So I know that might rub some folks the wrong way, but I'm a consultant and I work for many, many folks. I didn't get paid till the report was done. And I also didn't work for somebody twice if I screwed up the first time. So I'm just kind of, that's my mental focus. I also worked for the US Fore Service for twenty years. So I know what it's like to be in a government organization. But the point is, is that the committee that just continues to go on is a problem there. And I just think that it needs to be, they need to solve it or you need to redo it.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate those comments. Kathleen, we're going to you and then you guys at seven eleven, not, not, not the convenience store. And so we need to move ahead here and get to the parks presentation. So Kathleen, go ahead and let's wrap this up.
So my understanding is that you all did not prioritize seventeen point eight four. Is that right? Because that's, that seventeen point eight four is improvements required with development. And that had to do, you know, that kind of took us back to the Bailey Meadows thing, that, that particular, it says it needs an exhaustive clear and objective review and needs to be analyzed concurrently with the updated TSP. But my concern is that we're having a bunch of developments come in that we hope will have required development. And we don't have the clear and objective code to require them to put in the required development infrastructure. So that was the one, that and the park stuff was the one, two clear and objective things that I thought were priority. And I, and it's this, and what I'm talking about twenty twenty-two is it says recommended priority for twenty twenty-two. And again, I'm concerned that, you know, meanwhile, we've got a whole nother year of all these developments coming in that get grandfathered in with the old code. And we can't require them to put in the required needed infrastructure. And the city residents end up paying for it because we can't, we don't have clear and objective language to make them do it and pay for it themselves.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen. All right, everybody. Really appreciate this conversation. We need to do these more often, not every couple of years. And so thank you, everybody, for, for this conversation. Now we have one more topic. And let's do our drafts, Parks and Trails Master Plan update. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce Tracy Johnson with ESA. She has a presentation to give, that's going to do an overview of our parks, our draft Parks and Trails Master Plan. I also wanted to thank several people that have been working on this, you know, from the Technical Advisory Committee, the Parks and Trails Advisory Board. You know, we had hired Nancy and Nabnit to help us project manage this and work with Tracy and her team. Counselor Walker and Counselor Smallwood, participating on the boards and the committees and others as well, all the people that showed up to the public meetings, both virtually and the one in person back in two thousand nineteen. And with the draft that you see in your report, in yours, in the council packet, yes, it's the full draft plan. We don't, we didn't expect you to read every word of it tonight. And Tracy's going to walk through that with you, but it's gone through review from both the public and the committee on Parks and Trails Advisory Board. And I think there's a letter recommendation in there from the Parks and Trails Board. But, you know, this was a council goal to get this adopted this summer. And we thought, you know, having this joint meeting already on the calendar, we would bring this in front of both the Planning Commission and the city council on this work session so that we can keep moving forward on, on bringing this to a close and getting this thing adopted this summer. It does need to go through a hearing with the planning commission and then with the city council. So that's the sort of the process ahead of us. But Tracy, I know you got about a forty minute presentation that I think we have just amount enough time to run through it and leave some time for questions too. So I'll, I'll hand it off to you. Thanks for being here tonight.
All right. Well, hello, everyone. As Jordan said, my name's Tracy Johnson. I'm a landscape architect with Environmental Science Associates. And I've been working with the city for about fifteen months or so on this project. We got a little bit waylaid due to COVID, but we came back and got it pulled together. And now we're here to present it to you. So I do have a fairly long presentation. I will not be going through every slide because I want to preserve time for some conversation. So I will give you the high speed overview. I'll try not to speak too fast, but I'll, I'll give you a quick overview. The slideshow was part of your packet. So, you know, there, it is included for a review. And of course, you guys have the report itself. So I'm now going to attempt to share screens. And then I need to make my slideshow into a slideshow. All right. And I'm going to move for some reason you guys are not docking. There we go. All right. So the purpose of the master plan, so the master plan, the prior master plan is pretty out of date. A lot of the goals that were included in the prior master plan have been accomplished and the population has grown substantially. And so those are the primary reasons. There are a lot of reasons, but those are the primary reasons we need to plan for the future and we need an updated plan to guide us. And of course, a lot of the conversation I have been listening for the last hour or so, a lot of the conversation about the clear and objective language and the things related to the planning code, we are looking at some of those things related to the parks component as well, as part of this process. So chapter, so the report is roughly in six chapters plus appendices. Chapter one is the introduction, includes the basic goals for the project. It includes a map of the planning area. So the planning area for this includes the city limits, which is the darker, darker orange area, the UGB, and also the UGR. Because we expect over the planning, planning period that as population grows, components of that UGR area are going to be absorbed into the community and therefore parks will be needed in those areas. There's been, as I said, substantial progress since the last master plan. That one had planned through twenty fifteen, so we're a little bit behind in getting an update pulled together, which is one of the primary reasons we wanted to do that. We also wanted to look and see how we are doing this against our goals from that and made sure that we are keeping pace with growth. The chapter two is the community profile, and that's generally a review of the community demographics. And so one of the things you can see is that our current population is approximately eleven thousand six hundred and fifty. Don't quote me on that. It's probably changed already. But that was the ballpark that we used. That was the PSU Population Center forecast that was used throughout the report. And then the forecast for twenty thirty-five is currently nineteen thousand. So that's the population that we're planning for in the report. There have been a few shifts in demographics since the last plan, generally trending with the rest of the state as far as an increase in adults over fifty-five, increase in Hispanic and Latino population. And it's worth noting, the population grew since the prior plan, but not as much as had been expected. As Jordan said, we had a pretty extensive public outreach process. This was the part that got a little waylaid due to COVID, but luckily we had gotten a pretty good start before things got shut down. And so we did have a website for the project. We did, we performed stakeholder interviews in January of twenty twenty. We also had a technical advisory committee or stakeholder committee that included several of the counselors, Kathleen and Lori were part of that committee. We also had staff involved. Emily was involved and met with Jordan and Kelly and other staff at various times, Tanya Richardson and others. So that was a pretty good, we had a pretty good core group, a number of members of the Parks and Trails Advisory Board as well. We held three open houses. Two of those were in person in spring of twenty twenty before everything was shut down. So we had one in person at the senior center. And then we had one in person at the Sandy Vista Community Center. And then we also conducted an online open house in the fall to, after we'd made some progress to go back and check in with the community and get input on where we were in some of the proposed elements. And for each of those open houses, we had an online survey. And for the two in-person open houses, we also had in-person comment forums. The third chapter is a summary of the existing park inventory. And so this is our existing park inventory map. It's not going to be very legible on your screens, but there is an eleven by seventeen map flyout within the report that you can look at in more detail. But this, these are color coded by the type of park that they are. So these sort of turquoise parks are your community parks, the lavender or purple parks are the neighborhood parks. The red parks are mini parks, but they're mini, so they're hard to see at the scale. But those are the primary park classifications. And then we have significant open, natural open space corridor along Tickle Creek. So this is a quick overview summary of the types of parks that you have. So one of the things we did since the last plan, the last plan had quite a few park classifications, but some of them were classifications that were not actually provided by the city of Sandy. So when we talk about park classification, that means like what we call it when we're sort of thinking about it. And it also affects how we develop a park. So a mini park is a small park to serve a small neighborhood within a quarter mile. A neighborhood park is a little bit larger park that serves community within about a half mile radius. Both of those usually are walking or biking to rather than driving. A community park is a larger park. That's a park that's going to serve the whole community. You can drive to it. It has restrooms and parking and bigger, more active facilities that might draw people from around the community. So one of the things we did through this is we kind of streamlined the number of classifications to really represent the core of what your park system offers, rather than having a, you know, a category that had one thing in it or zero things in it. That didn't seem like it was very useful to you. Chapter four is level of service and needs. And so this is where we analyzed the current level of service, which is we looked at it a couple of different ways, but the first way that you look at is you'll get the total acreage you have in each of these park classifications. And then what that translates to in an acres per thousand. This is the common way that park plans are evaluated is how many acres of parkland per thousand are you providing to the community? And so you can see in nineteen ninety-seven, standards were established for all of the major park classifications. This is the column that's the second one from the right. This is the, the list of the nineteen ninety-seven plan standard. And then adjacent to that, the rightmost column is the SCORP recommended level of service, which is the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. And so that's another plan that we look at. We look at what we planned in ninety-seven and also what SCORP recommends. And then we look at how we are doing. So you can see the middle column, the current, let me get my pointer so I can point a little bit. So this current developed level of service is where we are comparing our total acres to our current population. So we have about point three three acres per thousand of mini parks, which is in excess of our standard or of our goal from nineteen ninety-seven. And it's right in the middle of the range of the SCORP recommended. So that's great. Neighborhood parks similarly were a little bit below the goal. And it depends if you look at total acreage or if you look at developed acreage, because we have three undeveloped neighborhood parks in the city of Sandy. And so again, we're kind of right in the middle because we actually, for total acreage, we're in excess of the goal from nineteen ninety-seven and we're right in the range for SCORP. So we looked at this and we felt like overall, the city of Sandy is doing really well. You guys have done a good job of acquiring land, especially neighborhood parks, mini parks and natural areas. The one area where there's sort of a notable lag is under community parks. And these are going to be the larger parcels. So the only two community parks are Minig and the Sandy Community Campus. And so that gives you about twenty-four point eight total acres of community park, but developed acres, you only have eleven, which is basically the equivalent of Minig because Sandy Community Campus has not been fully developed into a park yet. And so what you see is in your total acreage level of service, you're below your target from nineteen ninety-seven. And if you look at developed level of service, we're even lower than that. We're a little under an acre per thousand. So this is one of the areas that came up and was discussed a lot with the Technical Advisory Committee, with the Parks and Trails Advisory Board, and often in the stakeholder interviews and in the community meetings and open houses, we got a lot of feedback about active uses that people would like to see in the park system. Those are the kinds of things that would land in a community park. So you can kind of see people want ball fields, skate park, pump track. Those are kind of bigger draws and those would usually occur in a community park. And those are the common themes of things that we heard. Also, people love picnicking and trails and things like that. But you can kind of see that this deficiency in community parks started to translate in some of the public input we received. Another thing, another way we look at level of service, I'll see this, the pointer gives me fits when I try to advance my screen. So I'll turn it back off. So another way that we look at level of service is by evaluating service areas. And so this is looking at mini parks and neighborhood parks. So the small yellow circles are, so those are the quarter mile service area around existing mini parks. And then these aqua circles are the half mile service area around existing neighborhood parks. And then you can see there are several of these that are crosshatched. And these are representing potential service areas for the undeveloped neighborhood parks. So we have, here we have Deer Point, Ponder Lane, Champion Way, and we have Sandy Community Campus. Because although that's a, we've classified that as a community park, it will be able to serve the neighborhood park needs of the neighborhood that's directly adjacent to it, that's within walking distance. So that, so that actually helps to fill a service area gap. Another thing of note is because neighborhood and mini parks are generally parks that are considered to be walk or bike too, we consider barriers to access. And so the primary barriers in Sandy are the two state highways that are crisscrossing through town. So Highway twenty-six and Highway two eleven are noted in red. And you can see that in some cases, the service area does not cross that line. That doesn't mean that access couldn't happen across that line, but a mom's unlikely to send her kids to the park if they have to cross Highway twenty-six to get there, even if there was a signalized intersection. So Deer Point, for example, you know, has the potential to serve the Sandy Vista community on the opposite side and the Vista Loop. And in the future, there could be a signalized intersection that would allow passage, but it's still not going to be a very safe, you know, what we consider a great safe opportunity. But so anyway, so this is one of the things, we also looked at this to help us identify areas that we need to plan for parks in the future. So you can see gaps in those service areas. Like here is a gap that doesn't have, luckily, there isn't a lot of population in this area. The gray hatch behind is the residential zoned areas. And so that's where you start to see, okay, we don't have any parks that are serving this area. We don't have any parks that are serving this area. We don't have any parks that are serving this area to the east. And then when you look at our urban growth boundary and urban reserve, you can see where obviously we have gaps for future growth that we'll need to fill. So then the next step that we take this is we go and we, we looked at our needs assessment, turning off my laser pointer again. And so the needs analysis looks at what is our current level of service and our current acreage. And then we, we, we looked at our levels of service that we had from nineteen ninety-seven and we made some recommendations as to modifications to those to account for future growth. And so then what that translates to is a current acres needed, which is comparing the proposed level of service against what we currently have and how much do we need today? And then we also look at planning for the future. So this is future acres needed to meet the future population growth. And then that translates to a total acres needed. So for example, on mini parks, our target level of service is a little bit below what we are currently providing, which means we don't, we have a surplus of mini parks and we don't need any mini parks right now. In the future, that's why this is a negative number. In the future, we'll need about one point eight acres. And so that means we would need to acquire about one acre after you deduct the surplus. And so this is how we start to get to our proposed park system is calculating how many acres we need to serve our current community and how many acres we need to serve the future population growth that's projected through twenty thirty-five. And another thing I realized that I have not really been addressing very closely is the trail miles. And so trails are looked at differently. They're looked at miles per thousand population rather than acres per thousand population. And again, our current miles is about point eight five, which is right in the middle of the range of the SCORP recommended level of service. And the Technical Advisory Committee proposed that we would target the high end of the range because trails is another area that we got a lot of input from the community during public output or outreach that people would really like to see better trail connectivity, a looped trail system around the town that you could travel off street to get. I mean, you're not going to fully achieve off street, but trying to really reinforce the trail connections and, and improve alternative transportation options. And so this is another thing that we looked at is the recreation facilities themselves. These are the parts that are inside the parks. And so this is again, looked at from a perspective of how many do we have currently? What is this? And in this case, these were not established in the prior master plan and it's easy to just rely on SCORP standards. And so we compared our current system to SCORP. And we kind of highlighted, because there are so many items here, I'll just say, the things that are green are things that we're generally doing well at supplying. The things that are red are things that we have a deficit or need to plan for. Currently, we have a deficit and then Currently, we have a deficit and then we would need to, of course, focus on expansion for future growth. Um, and this falls into two categories. There are sort of standard facilities, which are things that you generally would always see in a park system. Uh, picnic tables, picnic shelters, basketball courts, playgrounds, and then optional facilities, which um, generally came up a lot in community outreach and can be included in park systems, but not all park systems choose to offer them. Um, which are things like the pump track, um, the swimming pool, splash pads, lacrosse and football fields. Often those are not provided by park systems other than a large field that can be used for those games. So then chapter five is recommendations. And so this is where we started to sort of dial all of this information into an, a series of recommendations that for implementation over the next fifteen years. And so, um, these are the areas that, you know, it's, there's a lot, I can't summarize all of it here tonight, but that would, the chapter five and chapter six are the, the chapters that, you know, have the meat of the proposed park system in them for, um, for you to review more closely if you haven't already. So the recommendations, as I said, were derived from a lot of, you know, from meetings with the technical advisory committee, meetings with city staff and the public input. The focus really is on developing the existing parks and renovating existing parks that are in poor repair. Um, pro- developing the proposed, proposed park and trails, particularly where we have um, service area gaps or we have known deficiencies such as the community parks and the active recreation facilities. And then policy and code revisions, which you guys have been talking about a bit today, and then operations and maintenance. So this map is the proposed park system. Again, this map occurs in your, um, in the report as in eleven by seventeen. And what we have here is we have little labels on these that correlate to the key that is on the right, there's a legend on the right hand corner. And so that is showing, um, the turquoise locations are potential community park locations, because those are larger acreage acquisitions. They're generally likely to occur on the fringes of town where larger parcels could be acquired. The purple are neighborhood, proposed neighborhood park locations and the red are potential proposed mini park locations. Now these symbols that are on this map are not intended to specify a specific parcel. They're really intended to specify an area that needs, you know, it's, it's when we think about the service areas, this is the general area or a general neighborhood that needs a park over time. And the, the order we've like identified what we think the priority order is on which ones would, you know, go first and which ones would be nearer term versus longer term, but it will really be driven by acquisition opportunities. And particularly for the mini parks and the neighborhood parks, they'll be tied to um, development. So for example, um, you know, if not, if significant residential development doesn't happen in this quadrant for a while, I wouldn't expect this mini park to be a high priority. Similarly, you know, this area out here, maybe you guys will, you know, absorb it into the city and you'll have a subdivision out here next year, or it could be ten years. And so this neighborhood park is kind of associated with as population develops around it, then, you know, we would be looking to acquire and develop a neighborhood park to serve that new residential community. And this is the trail plan. So for each of the, for the existing system, we have existing park and existing trail map. And then for the proposed system, we have proposed park and proposed trail system map. Um, and so in this, you can see we have quite a long, quite a long list of trail, potential trails that have been identified for the project. So the brown lines are the existing trails and the green lines are the proposed uh, system trails. And then chapter six is implementation. And this is where we talk about things like the priorities. What are our priorities? What do we think are near term, midterm and long term goal? You know, which projects will be in the midterm, near term and long term? How much are they going to cost to develop? And, um, and where might that funding come from? And so in this case, the tier one CIP includes a selection of what we think are the highest priority of the existing parks. And what we think are the most likely high priority proposed parks. And then about a third of the proposed trails and where we think they are the highest priority. And uh, this group includes in particular, a number of trails that were included in the last transportation system plan and are included in the trails, SDC. And so then, um, for all of this, we've looked at the funding sources. And so we know that general fund is generally just reserved for operations only in the city of Sandy. System development charges are collected for parks and trails in the city of Sandy currently. But those fees have not been updated in a long time and they're lagging significantly behind um, other cities in the region. And so that's something that needs to be reviewed. The land dedication and fee and lieu policy is something that um, is a source of funds and/or a source of land for park acquisitions, but it pretty much just targets mini and neighborhood parks. And so that's one of the reasons that you see that you've done well, keeping up with those two categories, classifications of parks, whereas community parks don't really have an acquisition source currently within the current system. And so other than grants or using the fee and loo funds to buy a community park parcel, um, that's where the gap sort of has arisen. And then grants and donations are the other current funding sources. And so what we did for development funding estimates is we looked at the current budget. Um, the current adopted budget has an annual budget estimate for SDC income of three hundred and fifteen thousand. And then we made some assumptions that potentially if, um, if you guys were diligent, you could potentially get a hundred thousand dollars or more per year in grants as a match for your SDCs. And that donations from volunteers could achieve another fifty thousand or so per year in um, development for a total income of about four hundred and sixty five thousand per year, which for the five year near term would be a little bit over two million. I think it's worth noting this, because as I said, the SDC budget or SDC fee has not been updated substantially in recent years. Revenue could be higher than this. I mean, revenue is going to be entirely dependent on building permit applications. But revenue, you know, so it could be higher or lower depending on how much development comes um, through Sandy over the next few years, but it, it is possible that if it stays in line with what's forecast, if you were to update your SDC fees, you could see higher revenue than this. And then in addition to what we're forecasting for the next five years, we have an existing SDC balance that can be used towards park acquisition or, or development, or actually towards park development, I'm sorry, only. And then there is potential to use some of the urban renewal funds to help with redevelopment of Sandy Community Campus. And then there's the possibility of pursuing a bond of some type to help supply additional funding to help with the um, costs of park development. Now, in addition to this, we also looked at lips, sorry, I clicked too many clicks and I click back. The other thing that we looked at is land acquisition funding. So as I said, the only mechanism that you currently have is the fee and lieu that you get in, um, from when land dedication doesn't occur. And so that is also included in the current budget at an estimated value of a hundred and sixty five thousand. Um, that was also something that was discussed at length in the technical advisory committee meetings and um, is a fee that has not been updated, the calculation for that has not been updated. And for both the SDC and the fee and lieu, we recommend that those fees be reviewed annually with the budget and increased with cost of living or the other metrics that are used to increase your other fees so that they keep pace with values, particularly for land acquisition. The fee and lieu has lagged behind the actual land values. And so it is not representative of the revenue that it could be generating. So anyways, this is showing in addition to about eight hundred thousand over the five year near term prior, tier one priorities, we also have an existing balance in this fund as well. So you, you know, we're estimating about two million that could be used for acquisitions. In addition to that, of course, grants can be pursued for acquisitions. And for natural areas, often those have been, I think, coming in primarily as donations. And so those are expected to continue along the Tickle Creek corridor and in other areas. Um, I'm gonna just get, go through a few more slides and then I'm gonna stop so that we don't run out of time. We have some time for questions. So I won't have gotten through all of my slides, but the meat of it, I've gone through the meat of it. So operations funding is something that we talked about, um, in the technical advisory committee and with staff. And I just have a couple of tables that kind of show what we see here is we see the increase in income from the parks capital fund, which is the blue line. You can see it's really taken off in the last few years as more development pressure has come in from, you know, into the city of Sandy. And what we see is the parks operations, which is the orange line, their budget has grown a little, but not at the same rate. Um, and so that, that generally correlates with, you know, not having significantly more staff or resources to maintain a growing park system. And so what we see here is kind of a gap between the potential future park system and needing to find a funding source to help pay for the operations and maintenance so that they can keep up the proposed park system. And this is another way you can look at it. And again, this is the number of facilities that are being maintained over the last twenty years versus the um, the number of staff that's been funded by the general fund. And again, the, the parks are blue and the operations and maintenance is orange. And so that was just something that again, we looked at, we made some proposed recommendations about finding a source of revenue that could potentially help to fill that funding gap. And then I'll just rest on the appendices for a moment. Um, in the appendices, we've included a lot of background information and additional detail on things that were too fine grained to go into the main report, but provides important support documentation. Um, there's a full public outreach summary that's at the back of the report that summarizes all of the input we received. There's a preliminary SDC analysis that was prepared by FCS Group. Um, looking at what the current S, SDC is and what potential different options could be to either increase the SDC or look at a combination of SDC and a bond or something else to fill the, you know, a bond to fill the gap. Um, we also developed concepts for a number of the undeveloped park parcels. So there are three neighborhood parks that we developed concepts for, and those are presented in the recommendation section of the report under chapter five. And then more detail on those is in the appendices. And we included the existing park inventory in detail, the full capital project lists for all of the projects in the proposed plan, not just the tier one. And then, um, I'm listing these out of order, but the last one that we talked about is the design guidelines. And so this is yes, again, starting to set some, some guidelines on what these different parks mean and what types of facilities they include. And this is both for internal use and also potentially for use with um, the fee and lieu and the, the parks developments that are coming in through um, subdivisions. And so this provides, you know, if a mini park was to be provided, about how big would the playground be, about how much of a field or lawn area would you expect? And then some of the other sort of standard amenities and then optional amenities that could be included. And so you can see, you know, the, the number of things that are potentially included within the park varies based on the size and the intensity of use of the park, with the mini park being the least developed and the community park being the largest and the most intensive use. We also similarly established some trail standards for diff, for different classifications of trails from a class one shared use path, which would be a wide paved trail to a class four natural area trail, which would be natural surface and relatively narrow footpath. So I'm gonna stop there. I could keep going, but I don't wanna um, take up all of the remaining time. So, um, I will stop sharing my screen and you and be open for questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Um, exciting. Uh, so questions or just, well, let's start with questions from council or commission. Uh, yeah, Don Carlton, Commissioner.
Okay, I guess I'll, I'll kick it off. Uh, first of all, Tracy, my compliments. Uh, I, I took time to go review the plan. Excellent work. Um, I spent my entire career in planning and so I always have a saying, proper power planning, pathetic, pathetic poor performance. So the camp goal is to, it's called the seven Ps and uh, you can replace one of them with another word if you want, but the bottom line is with good planning, at least we, we can get toward good objectives. Um, my thoughts one are towards the implementation side. Um, I know myself and other planning commissioners have become concerned. Um, and our, our, I guess, just your, our schedule of fees, this is the fee in lieu of. Um, every time we have an uh, planning application that comes to us at least, um, you know, either they're gonna develop a park or do a fee in lieu of. And it just seems at this point, the preponderance of is the, they do, they want to do the fee in lieu of. Um, I know at times that actually they have approached council with that before it even had come to us. So like decisions already somewhat made. So I like to encourage that to be in the right order. But here's my bottom line, let's just look at economics. If we want parks land dedicated so it can be developed, then it needs to be reserved. And if the developer builds houses on everything, you obviously can't build a park. So let's just think the economic, um, economics here and Carl probably one of the best people to talk about this. I think our fees too low. It's obviously better for the developer to build houses and pay us our two grand, two hundred thousand an acre, whatever the number is. So back to the market theory, what if it was three hundred thousand? Let's, you'll think of the objective. And if you actually want parkland reserved, then I guess I'm thinking mainly about these smaller parks, you know, Tracy, the more you know, you know, community parks. Um, we, we have that. So we have some good examples, like Deer Point Park was an example the developer or made. Um, et cetera, but that's uh, more the exception than the rule. So I'd like council to, um, you know, think about or work with that number. Um, because I think to meet our goal, um, we need to have land reserved, not all built into houses. And currently, the economics of it are for the developers at least, it's cheaper to pay the city than to, to build that. So that's, that's, that's one of my key, key things that I keep seeing coming through.
We did include a recommendation, one of our primary recommendations was to review the fee and lieu, update it to current market value and then to get it updated annually, like I said, so that it helps to keep pace. But I think it also, you know, even if you're adjusting for market growth, you need to reassess every few years to make sure that, you know, you are keeping on track because the, every community grows at a different pace and land values can grow and change substantially. Um, but yes, that was something that we talked about a lot was the fact that the fee and lose obviously too low. And so it's becoming the option that they want to take.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I'm sure there's some analysis that can be done to come up with that, but if nothing else, the house or theory, you throw a rock out and make it four hundred thousand, see what happens, you know? You'll, you'll find out, you know, within two years if that's too high or too low, but um, I really would support us getting the parks built. Um, and if we don't have the land, we can't get there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ron Lusowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, going along with Don, I had to say is again, fees way, way, way too low. The other one is talk about, about process. We've had um, with several mayors going through and again, it's not a mayor or council deal. But the developer goes and asks, hey, I'm gonna develop this land, can I do the fee in lieu of? And I think process, why I'd really like to have that be under the discretion of the planning director. It's almost like an end around that a developer can do to get, to get that. And I'd like to see, I don't, I would call it a loophole, but that changed where I, we haven't even seen what they're gonna do yet, but they don't have to, they can do the fee and bill. So hopefully that makes sense. You know what I'm talking about, but I, it's a, there's something with the process that doesn't make sense to me when the, the planning director has to be involved, um, on it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I was really excited to uh, go through that and read it and um, see the drawings, uh, as the council representatives to the parks, uh, board for so many years. Um, I sat there with Kathleen as we drew circles and multiple circles in the urban growth boundary and the expansion of that. And we identified a long time ago that we had a lot of mini parks and uh, they cost a lot of money to maintain. Um, and so recognizing we needed more community parks or uh, neighborhood parks. Um, but we needed to go through the urban uh, growth buddy, boundary study, get that done first. And then we needed it uh, before we could uh, go through with this uh, parks master plan. And so I, I sure appreciate that. And in knowing that, uh, we before recognized that the only way we were gonna get these um, community parks was the developers were never gonna do that, or even some of the neighborhood parks. to do that, or even some of the neighborhood parks. And one of them is a perfect example that was done and purchased before I was on council was Bornstead. Knowing that a development was going to be around this. And it was up to the developers discretion to to build it while they weren't going to just freely build it. So the city went bought that piece of property. Back then it was a million bucks and we paid it off. The parks board through the SDC or the parks fund through the SDC has paid that off over time. But that's another example. Now that this is the urban growth boundary study has been done and this is the master plan has been done, we have those things to be able to go and look at and put in reserve. Now that was leased out farm for several years until development came around it. And now we have something that's been developed around it. So as we look forward to the future and in that development processes have been done and recognizing that we are shy in those areas. And as we look in other communities, you they'll build around it, giving it great affinity. I sure enjoy that. Now, as far as the money is concerned and that type of thing, I think we definitely need to look at that, especially I think I heard with the price of land value going up, well, we all know that is getting to be really expensive. And so and if that's the, is that the barometer for what we are charging, do definitely look at that to bring in those values. But as someone that likes to run, I, in knowing that the trail systems around here is very can be expanded upon. I'm encouraged to see that that was part of it. And I I love that, that you've been encountered into the main highways that have intersected it because it is so true. We aren't going to, it's hard to run across that highway 26, even as fast as I am, playing Frogger is not fun. And of course, you know, I do it, but I would never send my kid across it, even at a stoplight. I think one thing to note, since this study has been done, as I read it, that the 211 is now a city street, but it's still a highway. So we still need to work on that piece of it. But great job. I'm super excited to see where we take this.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Tracy, great presentation. From my perspective, I appreciate it. I probably just giving you a bit of information here, but having a static value for fee in lieu is kind of erroneous in my opinion, only because as everyone has stated, land values continue to rise and that space becomes more and more valuable. So I would, I'm suggesting one of two things. One was already suggested is an annual review of the fee in lieu so that it can be based on market value pricing. Or second, what I think makes more comprehensible sense is to create a value based formula for that park fee in lieu, which means you take the the current value of the property times the CPI index or whatever the market rate is, just like if I was selling my home, I have to go get it appraised. That land should be appraised at the time of the purchase in order to create value for it because after all, the developer is just trying to take the the cheapest way out for themselves. And if we're serious about trying to create land space for parks, then we need to do a better job at at creating value for that land that we're reserving. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen.
With everything everybody said so far, I want to just thank Tracy and her team for what I'm just giddy with excitement to be where we are today. And you just have no idea, you guys. What I wanted to say was that, yeah, the the fact that we haven't updated the fee in lieu of is because we needed the parks master plan first before we could to to go with that step. So here we are, you know, and we can take it, we can move on that. Those are great ideas, Chris, about how to how to factor in kind of that inevitable increase in land value. I just want to also go kind of make a pitch that the way we went from 14 or from four to 19 parks or so, whatever we got, is that we had the parks master plan. And when there was a park identified in the parks master plan in the area of the development, the trail, the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee would make a recommendation to the planning group that that they require land dedication for to develop that park based on whatever the development was going to be, you know, it's a you know, it's a hundred acres or a hundred homes. It was, you know, I don't know, a couple acres or something like that. If there was not a park identified, the way we got some of the parks was that some of the developers really wanted a park, even though there wasn't one on the our parks master plan. And so Hamilton and Barlow Ridge were both ones, I think even maybe Timberline were parks that got developed by the developers because they wanted, they thought it would help sell lots. But when there's not a park identified in the parks master plan, our code, our current code says at the city's discretion only, it's the first statement in it, that we can require be in fee in lieu of be paid. And so that's kind of how we get what we, what we, what we want is we have a parks master plan. And when there's a park identified in the area, we require land dedication. And when there's not, we require them be so that we, and and that also helps for when we've got a bigger, like you said, with Bornstead, we need a bigger park. We've got some you know, if they're only, what happens is, you know, we get 50 homes here, 100 homes there, and you don't have enough all all together to kind of get that bigger land chunk. But you have that fee in lieu of saved up to kind of help add to the bank like what we did in Bornstead. So that's kind of how we got to where we are now. And we just need to make sure that our code evidently, you know, there's some issue and I'm going to, you know, bow to Chris, you know, our lawyer and stuff. But, you know, at the city's discretion is 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 our intent is that we are able to implement our Parks and Trails Master Plan with land dedication where a park is in the area or a trail. And then otherwise we go with be in lieu. So thank you. I'm so excited to be here. And finally seeing Parks and Trails Master Plan being presented to to council and planning commission. I, we've waited a long time and and can't wait to to go from here. Thanks for all your work, Tracy.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, Carl, and I just at 7:57, we're getting close to the eight o'clock hour here where we got to go to our urban renewal board meeting. Carl.
I'll be real quick. I really agree with Don Carlson about we have to establish where we want to put some of these specialized locations where the parks really make sense and the trails too. Otherwise, we're going to end up listening to the developer to say, here's a place that's got left over. And I think we've put more emphasis on what letting the developer tell us where than we have been in our own statement about what we need in terms of the city, in terms of what kind of park makes the most sense for us. I'm really anxious about that one. I think that's really a great idea. The other one is I've been doing a little bit of a study about STCs in the area and we are rock bottom low. We should really relook at that, those prices. Our developers are getting a lot of profit by not having to pay some of the numbers that say some of the other cities around us are getting. I've had a couple of appraisal, prasers tell me that because our STCs are so low that they're really concerned about the differences between what's the value of the house and what's the profit going into the pockets of the developers. And I think we should relook at those things. That's all I want to say real quick. Good job, though. I appreciate Tracy in terms of her our plan and the way it was presented. Thank you. Very good job.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Tracy, for a great presentation. Thank you to our city staff and all the volunteers and neighbors who worked on the on our parks master plan. Thank you to our planning commissioners for joining us. We are committed to doing these more often and improving our communication between our two bodies. And this is just kind of the first effort and step in doing that. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for for spending a couple hours with us this evening. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call it close to our Sandy joint work session between Sandy City Council and Planning Commission. And we'll pause as we let people log off and our Sandy Urban Renewal Board members to log on. But thank you, everybody. Really appreciate your time and your service.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to hurry through this next meeting council, and then we'll do like a five minute restroom break between this meeting and our our council meeting.
Mayor Polian, do you want to recess the gen- the city council work regular session while the URA board meets?
We we have not declared our, we're not in session. We were in a work session, so we have not opened.
Right. Thanks.
Yep. I, man, that feels good to, you know, be one upped over the attorney on that. Yes.
Chris, we advertised it as the city council meeting would begin immediately following the urban renewal.
Excellent.
All right. Do we have our, it's like we have all our members of our Sandy Urban Renewal Board. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call our and call to open our meeting of our Sandy Urban Renewal Board. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pete.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Hopkinson.
Here.
Chief Schneider.
Here.
Executive Director Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Polian.
Here. Thank you for that, Jeff. So a couple of items, just the approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting as well as the adoption of our Sandy Urban Renewal Board budget. Well, let's start off with our approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve our meeting minutes from our last meeting?
Go ahead.
I'll need that we approved the meeting notes from last time.
I'll second.
Wow, I got all turned around. Okay, so we'll do a motion from counselor or I guess board member Exner and a second from board member Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Opposed, nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Okay, I gotta pull up a script here. Second. Sorry about that. Yeah. All right. So I am opening a public hearing at 8:02 here on June 7. This hearing is being conducted to give the citizens an opportunity to comment on the biennium 2021-23 budget for the Sandy Urban Renewal Agency, which was approved by the Budget Committee on May 10, 2021. Please note the opportunity to offer public testimony will occur after the staff report concludes. At that time, I will provide instructions on how members of the public can participate and share their input. I will now call for any abstentions by the hearing body. Seeing none, is there any conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I will now call for the staff report.
Good evening, Urban Renewal Board members. Mayor Polian already touched on a couple of the things I was going to say, so that made my my job a little bit easier. But as was previously mentioned, the Urban Renewal Board received the proposed budget on May 10 and passed or adopted it, approved it rather unanimously. There were no changes made at that time. We have a public hearing open currently to take any testimony from the public regarding the proposed budget. The budget currently sits at $10,359,987. Includes 1.22 FTE to administer the urban renewal plan. And there's just over 3.5 million in capital improvement projects in this budget. Of that, about 3 million is the Sandy Community Campus. A long term city of Sandy goal to see some development happen over there. So with that, that concludes the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate that. We'll now move to public testimony. Here's the guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have materials that you wish to be considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, if you're participating, this would be that time. So if you're participating via online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call for testimony. Here's a reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You will be provided three minutes and Jeff will provide you with a 20 second warning. Jeff, do we have anyone wanting to do public comment?
Hey, Mayor, I'll just take a look at the list. Hey, Mayor, I do not see any raised hands this evening.
All right. Thank you. Tyler, staff recap.
Staff recommends that the Urban Renewal Agency Board approve the biennium 2123 budget in the amount of
Right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
For a second. All right. There's a motion by board member Pete Sold to close the public hearing, a second by board member Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, nay, or a thumbs down? Great. Public hearing is now closed. I'm calling for discussion, discussion by the hearing body. If you would like, you can make a motion that we adopt our biennium budget for the Sandy Urban Renewal Agency.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2021-13, a resolution adopting the biennium of 2021-23 budget and making appropriations.
All right, there's a motion by board member Pete Sold and a second by board member Smallwood to adopt the 2113 biennium budget for the Sandy Urban Renewal Agency. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. The budget has been adopted. Step one done for tonight, Tyler. Congratulations. You can have half the bottle of that champagne, but you got to wait till the rest for later this evening. With that, thank you, everybody, for logging on for this quick meeting for us, especially you Phil and Chris. And with that, I'm going to close our meeting of the Sandy Urban Renewal Board. And let's plan on reconvening for Sandy City Council meeting at about 8:10. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Well, let's go ahead and call our Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff. Your flag.
Black screen, Jeff. Black screen.
Jeff.
If you can hear me, I'm having some computer issues.
Oh, we can. We can hear you.
Okay. So.
This was your last chance to get on.
My goodness, I can't believe it. Okay. So, okay, actually, I think what I should do is I will, I'm going to jump off and it's going to go to the co-hosts and I will jump back on.
Okay.
Sorry, folks.
No problem. We'll bring down his script, his sheriff's screen now when he does that. I hope so.
If a co-host probably takes over, they can share their screen and unshare it.
I don't see if that anyone is a co-host now, though.
Someone must. We're still on.
Greg is, but he's probably not monitoring, so he's just before.
He's helping me.
I am here.
You guys, I mean, I've been watching other communities. We have watched the virtual meetings too. So of course, our last one.
It's like the last and the first, you know, it's like.
I know. Dara, okay, here we are. All right. So now I can get my council meeting here. Okay, so with that, well, next is the roll. George, do you want to call the roll for us?
Sure. I don't know if there's a certain order, but Mayor Polian?
I'm last. Yeah, but.
I I'm just going by seat. Counselor Walker. Counselor Hopkinson.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Pete Sold.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
I love being last.
Let the record reflect, we're all in attendance. With that, is there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing then. We will now go to public comment. All right, seeing none. We will now go to public comment, which of course I use Jeff on, but I think we can, well, actually, well, we're going to, why don't we maybe sidestep public comment and then return to it after?
Mayor, I did have something, I apologize for being so late to remembering this. I was wondering, with the discussions we have with old business, if it may be prudent to add the two new businesses, the Advisory Task Force above that, so that they, those people that have attended, I look at the list and I might see a couple people there, wouldn't have to sit through all the rest of the agenda items to finally get to them to be announced as on those commissions. So, I respect for them. I would, I would suggest that we take the pool advisory and the library advisory appointments and move, move them to above old business, just for that sake of their, and not having to spend the night with us.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but if we're gonna do that, why don't we just move all of new business above old business?
That's fine too.
Okay, is there any objection? All right, cool, let's do it. So with that, let's start under, well, let's actually, we'll change the agenda to that. What a meeting we're having here. And now that we have Jeff back logged on, let's go ahead and go to public comment. So Jeff, we're at a public comment now at this time. Please note that there will be opportunities to comment on the 2021-23 budget and the utility rate adjustments later this, later in the evening in this meeting. The council now welcomes your comments on all other issues at this time. The instructions are on the agenda, but if you're participating online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. You'll be provided three minutes and please remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff, do we have anyone wanting to provide public comment this evening?
Sorry about that, Mayor, and I'll go ahead and take a look.
Oh, you're good.
Hey Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. So we will move forward. I don't believe there is any staff response to our previous meeting's public comments. So with that, we'll go to the consent agenda. Was councillor Walker did have some questions on the consent agenda. Has staff been able to address those?
Chief, were you able to?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. I did, thank you Greg for helping me out. I'm sorry, I'm not on my camera, I'm looking at this piece here. So the question was on the last exhibit B.
Exhibit B, we're listed twice. And so the question is, what Sandy, what, what's the contract price for Sandy if we're listed twice? And I mean, our best guess is that we are the same as Gladstone and there's.
It's, it is. And there's another police department that was not listed here. It is, it's not the 4,4500. It is kind of based on city size and they confirm our warrants and other things that you can see in the, in this IGA. It's the same as what we had had before. They provide those services when the county went away from providing those services for us. Lake Oswego Communications stepped in and agreed to do this for us, which was a big help, even though it's costing us a little bit, but otherwise we would not be able to get this done. So we've had this agreement in place before. I don't know why or what that last one is. Your guess would be as good as mine, as far as I heard people guessing on the police departments. But it's not the 4,4500.
Okay, thank you, thank you. With that, is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda?
Make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda with the edit of, of removing that last $4,000 allocation off of exhibit B.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, here's a motion by councillor Walker and a second by councillor Sheldon to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye? Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. With that, let's go into our resolutions. Our public hearing on our 2021-23 budget adoption. A second. I'll now open a public hearing at 8:20 PM on June 7th, 2021. This hearing is being conducted to give citizens an opportunity to comment on the biennium 2021-23 budget for the city of Sandy, which was approved by the Budget Committee on May 10th, 2021, and on the use of the state shared revenue funds. State, oh, sorry. Please note, the opportunity to offer public testimony will occur after the staff report concludes. At that time, I will provide instructions on how members of the public can participate and share their input. Is there any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest from the hearing body?
Under, Mayor, under Resolution 2021-15, I'm going to abstain from voting on the section that deals with street water, sewer, and stormwater funds.
Okay, thank you.
My husband's position.
I guess I'm, thank you for that. And staff, I guess I'm looking for a little bit of help on, because don't we just, I'm usually, I just lead us in adopting the entire budget. So how, how should I lead our, our vote on this? Just looking for some advice.
When we get to Resolution 2021-15, we're gonna carve it out into two sections. We'll have a vote on the utility funds, which include streets, water, sewer, and stormwater, and then a separate vote for the remaining appropriations. So it's a little bit clunky, it's one resolution. We'll just have two votes for the two different sections of that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, councillor Walker. All right, with that, Tyler, staff report, please.
This one's a little bit longer than the Urban Renewal one, but I'll be as brief as possible. You may recall that the budget message was delivered and the entire budget presented, beginning on April 6th, with two meetings following that on May 3rd and May 10th. The current budget as presented is $102,935,234 in total and represents 79.87 full-time equivalent employees. During the budget hearings, the Budget Committee chose to allocate $308,000 of general revenue surplus to a handful of other departments. That 308,000 was allocated specifically with $152,000 to the Police Department, which included $14,000 in additional funds for training, $67,000 for the additional cost to lease three vehicles, and $71,000 for body and dash cameras for that department. Another $75,000 to the Parks, Buildings, and Grounds budget to pay for deferred maintenance and other necessary improvements in our numerous city parks. And then finally, $81,000 to the Aquatic and Recreation Center Fund to be set aside for future operations or other, you know, necessities in that department, ending a plan for the, the pool and the community campus site itself. It's important to note that within this budget, there's also $2.3 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds that has been placed in the non-departmental contingency line item. These funds are, a path of these funds are expected to be received before the end of this fiscal year, but we have not received them yet and we're still waiting on final guidance from the Treasury and the state as to how we can use those funds. Staff has identified about $320,000 that could be used for revenue replacement, leaving about 2 million to be used for other eligible ARPA expenses or expenditures. We will be coming back before council, once we have a more exhaustive list of allowable expenditures and no more gray area, or at least less gray area within the guidance, to develop a prioritized plan for how to use those $2.3 million in, in one-time ARPA funds. And last but not least, Mayor Polium touched on this already. There will be two separate votes for Resolution 2021-15. The first for the utility funds that are overseen by Public Works Director Mike Walker. The second vote for the remainder of that resolution. There is also Resolution 2021-14, which is to elect to receive state shared revenues. That includes liquor tax and state shared revenue from the state. And typically, we need to have a public hearing, which we're doing right now, to take testimony from the members, for members of the public regarding the use of those state shared funds, as well as any other matters related to the biennium 2021-23 budget.
All right, thank you Tyler, appreciate that. With that, we will go into public testimony. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have materials that you wish to be considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, if you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call for testimony. Just a reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll be provided three minutes each and Jeff will provide you a 20-second warning. With that, Jeff, is there anyone wanting to participate in public testimony?
Mayor, I'll wait just a moment for any hands. Hey Mayor, I do not see any hands this evening.
All right, thank you, Jeff. With that, Tyler, do you have a staff recap?
I realized I was muted before you had to remind me. That's improvement. The only recap I have is that staff recommends the council adopt the biennium 2021-23 budget as presented, totaling $102,935,234.
All right, thank you, sir. I will now look for a motion to close our public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
So motion by councillor Petezel, and a second by councillor Exner to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye? Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. All right, so I now call for discussion for Resolution 2021-14, election to receive state and shared revenues. Or we can have a motion to adopt those.
I don't think there's much discussion on this one. It's, it's just one of those no brainers. We just do it. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14, a resolution electing to receive state shared revenues.
Is there a second? All right, there's a motion by councillor Petezel, the second by councillor Sheldon to adopt Resolution 2021-14, election to receive state shared revenues. I'm all about that. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye? Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. Now, I'm calling for a discussion on street water, sewer, and stormwater portions of the budget that councillor Walker has recused herself from. I'm calling for a motion to approve the appropriations for street water, sewer, and stormwater funds in Resolution Number 2021-15. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the appropriations for the street water and sewer and stormwater funds in Resolution Number 2021-15.
I'll second that one.
All right, all those, there's been a motion by councillor Exner and a second by councillor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. Of course, please mark councillor Walker as, as refusing. And now, I am calling on discussion by the hearing body for the remainder of the budget. Councillor Walker is now rejoining our council on this vote. If there is, I'll entertain a motion. Basically, the motion needs to be to adopt the remaining, remaining 2021-23 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve all the remaining elements of Resolution Number 2021-15, a resolution adopting the biennium 2021-23 budget, making appropriations and levying taxes.
Perfect, all those, is there a second? Laurie's just having way too much fun playing along on this. There's a motion by councillor Petezel, a second by councillor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye? Opposed, nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Jordan, why don't you let Tyler go, so we can have that champagne. Congratulations, Tyler.
I've got one more thing for you later.
We do? I thought we made it. Oh, you have one more thing. Okay. Don't have too much champagne, Tyler, we're done with that.
I'll stick to water until then, thank you.
All right, all right. All right, with that, here, let's move forward in our agenda. Remember everyone, we're gonna go ahead and go to new business. Let's start with our pool exploratory task force appointments. Jordan?
Oh, great, yes, he does have one more. It's the public hearing on the master fee schedule. So we'll do that after these new businesses.
Oh, Jeremy, you totally got Tyler.
Oh, you got me, because I was gearing up for the master fee, but Jeff, do you wanna go ahead and do the summary of the task force appointments? You were involved with the committee and, and the interview on appointing those folks.
Sure, Jordan, yeah, so on April 19th, the council established the Pool Exploratory Task Force and adopted its bylaws, which are linked on the staff report. So we advertised the opportunity widely. We got, by all accounts, a pretty robust response. I think there were 15 applications, which is more than I've ever seen. We, a interview panel, which was appointed by the council, consisted of councillors Exner, Hokinson, and Walker, interviewed 10 of the applicants on May 26th and 27th. It was a great group, really impressive group. The recommendation coming from the interview panel is to appoint the six people that you see on the staff report. That's Casey Bund, Grant Hayball, Megan Lancaster, Jan Sharman, Blake Smith, and Mark Smith. So those six residents would join those three councillors for a total of nine. They did recognize the value in having an odd number of, of task force members, rather than the originally conceived 10. So I guess it would just be leaving one of those seats vacant for that reason. And their recommendation is unanimous.
All right, thank you so much. Is there a discussion? I see a hand up. Councillor Hokinson?
I just wanna say, I mean, there were a number of really well-qualified candidates, particularly in the outside of the city area, that we weren't, because of our limitations, weren't able to pull in. But we will do everything we can to use every bit of the resources and talent that, that we saw on that task force. So I just wanna thank everybody for applying.
Thank you, and I do recognize it's an unanimous, an unanimous recommendation. But I do have a question, I guess, out of curiosity, and this isn't to downplay any individuals on the committee. They all seem outstanding. With so many applicants, though, was there any discussion about having a father-son duo, you know, both on the committee, especially with such, you know?
We don't, we don't see relationships, Mayor.
Well, sure we do.
No, so we didn't, we didn't really discuss that, other than that both candidates were very qualified. But they bring a different perspective and a different set of history to the table as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, definitely, like I said, we have three, we're unanimous with our recommendations, so appreciate that. All right, is there any motions?
I'm happy to make the motion. Okay, a move that we appoint the, the, the members as just listed, Casey Bund, Grant Hayball, Megan Lancaster, Jan Sharman, Blake Smith, Mark Smith, to the Pool Exploratory Task Force.
Is there a second? Okay, a motion by councillor Hokinson, a second by councillor Sheldon, and a intervention by Jeff Caparati. What's going on?
I apologize, just as a technicality, I think the way these bylaws are written, the three councillors would be members as well, so we would need to include in the motion, appointing those councillors as members as well.
I would like to modify my own motion to appoint myself there and councillor Exner and councillor Walker as well.
And I'm guessing you're fine with remaining as the second councillor Sheldon? All right, with that, all in favor, there's a motion by councillor Hokinson, a second by councillor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? All right, perfect, motion carries. Moving on, next item under new business, library advisory board appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. I see Sarah McIntyre, library director, is here tonight, and she will summarize and. Thank you, Mayor. I see Sarah McIntyre, library director, is here tonight, um, and she will summarize and, uh, provide recommendation for our new, uh, or recommended, uh, library board members.
Thank you, Jordan and Mayor. Uh, the city advertised two vacant seats on the library advisory board, both in the Sandy service area. One for an unincorporated resident and one for a city resident. We had five candidates that were interviewed, um, by Mayor Collyum, councillor Walker, uh, councillor Sheldon, and, um, the library advisory board chair, Jerry McMahon. Their selections were unanimous. Um, so they would like to recommend Cheyenne Holiday from the unincorporated area. And Bethany Schultz as a city resident.
All right, um, I was on the committee. I'll just say, I thought, uh, everybody, uh, was awesome. That was comments that all the members said is just how happy we're, we were with everybody who applied for positions. And then we were all very confident who we recommended out. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion. Um, I also want to just thank, uh, Desiree Rogers, Katie Wegner, and Janet Davis, uh, for taking the time to throw their hat in the ring. And also thank you to Sarah McIntyre and, uh, Jeff for kind of shepherding the process for us. Well, with that, I move to appoint Cheyenne Holiday and Bethany Schultz to the library advisory board, seats seven and three respectively.
Is there a second? All right, motion by councillor, uh, Walker, a second by councillor Hockenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye. Uh, opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Uh, next item in our new business is our contract approval for our government relation services. Jordan.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Um, so before you, uh, is a contract for, um, government relations services. This was a, a, a council topic and, um, a direction that we received, I think, back in April. As we started talking about all these different funding, um, opportunities that were coming up with, uh, you know, federal infrastructure bills, uh, the stimulus funds, uh, what's going on at the state. And the allocation of those dollars. And I think there was consensus at council that we could use some help in engaging with our, um, elected officials. And positioning ourselves this year and, and future years to receiving, um, fate, uh, state and federal funding for our large infrastructure projects and more. And so we went out and, um, advertised, uh, and directly solicited for, uh, these government affairs services to, I think, five firms. We got a couple, uh, proposals and there was interviews conducted, um, in May, um, with, uh, Pac West Lobby Group and Rise Strategies. And it was, uh, councillor Pete told councillor Smallwood and councillor Walker that participated in those interviews. And, uh, the unanimous decision to engage with Pac West Lobby Group, um, uh, was a recommendation. Uh, the contract is, I think of, it's forty five hundred dollars per month. That's state and federal services. I think I would recommend we engage for at least a year. Uh, you kind of have to build momentum with these things, um, build those relationships. They, or they learn about our priorities. Um, and, um, I think, uh, we're, we're looking at least a, a, a one year engagement here. But there is in the contract, uh, a thirty day notice for either party to, uh, just engage, uh, if necessary. I think the interview panel recommends, uh, the contract with Pac West Lobby, uh, staff recommends that as well, um, in terms of paying for the forty five hundred. We will, um, uh, just expense that out of the non departmental budget and look at how we cost allocate that out to other funds, given that we're going to be, you know, leaning heavily on them to help us with our, our big infrastructure projects with, uh, sewer and water and, and streets. So that's a recommendation, the recommendation of, of the interview panel.
Thank you, Jordan. Councillor Hockenson.
So, I, I'm in, I mean, this is great. I'm glad we're moving forward with it. I think it could be helpful. But how do you know that you're getting value? How do you monitor a contract like this to know that it's working? I mean, you said it, it takes momentum, but what are the things you will look for? How do you, how do you keep track of it?
That is a great question. It's a good question for all of us. Um, obviously, um, administration staff will be the key, um, you know, sort of contract managers, right? And building a relationship with, uh, the lobbyists. Um, but also for you all, um, you know, at least, I think, once a year, uh, there'll be opportunity for some, if not all of you to travel to N L C. And of course, L O C, a chance for them to kind of work with you and, and work with our delegations and meeting with them. I think the difficulty, as you said, with these contracts and in these services is if you base it just on, do we get money or not? You may not get, you know, a good return on that investment, right? But if there's other things, you know, if they're opening doors to opportunities, um, showing us, you know, sort of the, these, uh, you know, grant opportunities. If we're able to connect with, um, our delegations and build those relationships, um, you know, that can also be seen as success, but you have to have more of a long term view. And in years where the earmarks went away, you know, a lot of cities kind of cut ties with government relations because there wasn't a lot of those, um, sort of opportunities for direct funding. With that coming back, you know, maybe we'll see a little bit more return on this kind of investment. But you're right. I mean, uh, for me, it's also, um, I've already seen the stuff that they're providing, which I think is helpful. They give legislative updates that, um, I'm sure you guys will be getting if you haven't already. So you kind of hear about the goings ons, what's going on with, you know, different house bills, what's working its way through the state and federal legislatures. Um, and I think those are helpful because we just don't have that staff, um, on, you know, capability or, or capacity to be that sort of role of government relations and monitoring government affairs. So those are things that I think we'll, we'll monitor and just see what kind of value outside of just how much money did we get, you know, this month or this year from the state or federal government. Happy to hear any thoughts from other councillors too.
Well, uh, one thing I'd add to that is, especially now that we have, uh, uh, if we move forward with this and we have a government relations firm. I mean, we would not be utilizing them if all of a sudden we're not adopting a legislative, uh, agenda, you know, platform that we're pushing for as a council through the legislature. Same on the national level that really focuses, you know, our, uh, our firm and kind of who they're reaching out to and building relationships with on our behalf. But I think, you know, with a year, we should know, right? I mean, we should have a pretty good feel for how the relationship's going, how the door opening's going and, and all that kind of stuff. All right, I saw some hands up. I'll start with councillor Smallwood.
Yeah, so, uh, Dawn, also just to kind of touch on, to answer a look, maybe a little more of your question and to add to what Jordan said. We, we asked him some pretty, or staff had some pretty tough questions, uh, set up for them, and, uh, they were very explicit, very detailed with, you know, hey, we're, we know what's coming before the state legislature. We know what's coming before, uh, the federal government. We know what your, your asks are, what your high priorities are. And, you know, I think, uh, they were very willing, even in the interview process, to tell us that, hey, hey, this is a good project that you're going to get money for. This is not a project that you're going to get money for. And so, yeah, and so I don't, because that was my big thing too. Like, one of my questions, you know, for myself was, well, gee, you know, these guys are just, how do you prevent them from just taking your money? And, and, and how do you identify those, those? And so I really appreciated their, uh, their clarity and their transparency in saying, hey, you know what? This is, these are good projects. These are just not good projects and you're, you're just not going to go anywhere with them. So, um, you know, I guess we'll see how the year goes, but, but I feel pretty confident that these guys will, uh, will do a very good job, uh, for us as a city. And I kind of look forward to seeing the, the outcome.
Councillor Pete told.
Yeah, I'll have to say exactly what Jordan and Lori said, so I'm not going to repeat that. I agree wholeheartedly with that. But what I will add to it is, uh, I think there was a comment earlier today in this meeting, um, maybe right when we first started off, uh, the meeting, uh, maybe from Kathleen's comments. Um, about some of the legislations coming down. And so some of those things can be the updates that we have. But then not only that, how to get in front of the right people, the people who are writing the bills, knowing what it is that that person that's writing that bill or co sponsoring that bill. Is really their agenda behind something like that and knowing, you know, where and who, you know, whether the one, the bill's going to go forward. They have a pretty good sense of what's going on and where to spend our time and our resources with them, um, as well as, uh, uh, where not to. And so I think that was another added advantage that hasn't been spoken to tonight. Uh, so I'm really excited because, um, even though we're coming, we're kind of late into the game. As in far as, um, the end of a session here, that's, it should be wrapping up. We'll see, um, by the end of the month. But, um, but, you know, there's a special session going on with those type of things coming forward. You know, they will have gotten that communication with us to be able to present those things going forward. Especially when we talked about the earmarks, you know, that are coming back and those type of things. So, that's all.
Great. Councillor Walker.
Yeah, I agree with everything, uh, councillor Smallwood said, um, in, in, uh, Pete told, um. Yeah, I, I guess, you know, one of the things that kind of took me by surprise when y'all mentioned the, the, the duplex middle housing require, you know, the new bill saying that basically now we have to divide a, a single family residential lot into two, you know, we just voted, you know, what, a month ago on that, all that, all the revised code on the duplex stuff. And that never came up that, that, because I remember we talked about it because, you know, we talked about whether duplexes had to stay together attached or detached. And the fact that they could split the lot was never mentioned when we were having our discussion. So that's a big important thing that I think it would have changed some people's vote about that. That said, I think these guys are going to be great. I wish we'd had them last year before all this stuff has come up. I'm curious to know, it's such a different situation year with, uh, all the stimulus funding and, and things that are coming down. I'm hopeful that even though they're closing down their session, that, that these people have a lot of relationships with the staff. And I'm hoping that, that we are able to kind of mine the depths of, uh, opportunity with all the legislative staffs and really get those relationships and try to kind of, you know, move some money our way. So I'm excited about it, but I'm also wanting to see if we can't in the future, use them a little bit more proactively to prevent some of the one size fits all stuff that's coming down the pipe for our residential development.
Um, all right. Well, thank you, everyone. I just, I wanted to say thank you to the committee, uh, for, and we're in staff for, uh, working through this R F P process. I can tell you, as Sony's been around, did a little bit as, um, these guys, these folks are very highly regarded, um, inside the building and out and by both parties. And so I just, I think it's a great partnership, um, for our city to engage in. Uh, the one thing I would just kind of caution everyone on, on their expectations going in though, is, is, I mean, at the end of the day, they're representing the city of Sandy. And we're still a population of eleven thousand and, and some of these are big, big statewide initiatives and movements. So the idea that now that we got our lobby firm, we're going to be able to just throw these knockout punches, you know, um, that we certainly should try. Because I want to be on these issues, Kathleen, I really am. Uh, but I think we also got to gear our expectations towards kind of revenue seeking, grant seeking, um, little. And then, of course, maybe little things that might directly kind of affect C N D and some of our codes. But, um, with that, can we, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Pac West Lobby Group.
Is there a second? Uh, motion by councillor Pete told the second by councillor Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, a nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. All right. Yeah, I love doing new business and then back to old business. Let's do it. Uh, all right, old business, public hearing. So let me kind of get ready for that one second here. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing, um, at, uh, eight forty eight P M here on June seventh. Uh, this hearing is being conducted to give citizens the opportunity to comment on adjustments to the city's master fee schedule, including changes to sewer rates, water rates, stormwater rates, and park use fees. It is anticipated that this hearing will be continued to June twenty first, which will provide an additional period for public comment. Please note, the opportunity to offer public test testimony will occur after the staff report concludes. At that time, I will provide instructions on how members of the public can participate and share their input. Are there any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest from the hearing body?
Um, I believe I, I need to abstain from this because of the sewer and water, uh, fee issues. So I will abstain, recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Walker. Appreciate that. Um, with that, Tyler, staff report.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Uh, that's my last and final staff report for you tonight, and then I'll leave you alone. Uh, so you might recall that back in November and December, we had a series of, uh, work sessions and council meetings to update, uh, certain components of the master fee schedule, specifically water and sewer rates. At that time, the council chose to defer those rate increases to a future date due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and, and the unknowns that were still, um, surrounding the pandemic back at that point in time. So we've since then, um, you know, created, uh, proposed, approved, and now adopted a budget that includes various rate increases. And so this is, uh, formality to circle back to that and seek public comment specifically on those rate increases, um, and then get the approval of council to do so. So first, um, one item that has not been touched on previously is a change in the park use fees. We currently charge three hundred dollars with a hundred dollar refundable deposit to reserve my new park gazebo. Uh, we're proposing to change that to a flat fee of two hundred dollars for city residents and three hundred dollars for non residents. And then remove the, uh, refundable deposit portion of that. It's sort of an administrative burden to, you know, take the, the deposit, take the full amount and then, uh, create a new vendor, cut a check. Once we've, you know, confirmed that they didn't do any significant damage, um, quite frankly, we're going to know who does damage. If damage is incurred ever at that location anyways, if it happens at the, the time of the rental, and so we don't foresee an issue there. And then, uh, restructuring the fees so that we are charging non residents, uh, a little bit higher than our residents, uh, for utilizing some of those amenities in our parks. We'd also like to extend that same fee structure to Centennial Plaza, which we currently, uh, haven't been charging any rental fees for, um, you know, for larger facility reservations there. We anticipate that going forward, we'll still see groups, uh, congregate there and try to reserve that. And this is a way to capture the, uh, increased costs for either, you know, police services or staff time in monitoring who has made reservations and who hasn't made reservations. And is the facility open or not open? And lastly, with park use fees, uh, we have those two newer, um, really new structures at Bornstedt Park, um, near the splash pad. We don't have any fees currently attached to that. And we'd like to implement a, a little bit less of a fee for a hundred dollars for residents or two hundred dollars for non residents to reserve those picnic shelters. Uh, and we anticipate that will bring in some additional revenue, especially in the summer months with warmer weather and, and families trying to picnic or birthday party, uh, under an ice shaded area. And then with stormwater, uh, the fee is currently at three dollars and twenty five cents, proposing an increase, uh, of twenty five cents up to three dollars and fifty cents for that fee. And the last time this fee was updated was November of two thousand and eleven. So it's been almost ten years since then. And this is really needed to balance the budget within the stormwater fund. Uh, for water, proposing an eight percent rate increase, uh, this is based off of the water rate models that we have, uh, most recently received from F C, F C S group. Uh, and that will help stabilize the fund balance and, and ensure we have the required, um, debt service ratios for our existing debt. And help us, uh, you know, get on better ground for future debt with, uh, whatever sort of bull run treatment facility, uh, or, or process that we end up going with. Uh, it's important to note that we don't have, um, the future expenditures for the treatment plant, water treatment plant, um, built into the rate model. So the, the rates that you see in the attachments to the staff report are definitely subject to change once we, once we have some better, uh, direction and dollar amounts going forward with those treatment plan options. And then lastly, and I will do this part quickly and turn it over to Doug Gabbard and Zach Hazel from F C S group to talk about sewer rates a little bit more in depth than I will. Uh, but a fifteen percent rate increase that was, uh, identified back in November and December as well. And so we're just looking to implement that now effective with the July billing and sounds like a broken record. I think we all know why that rate, uh, increase is needed, but, um, we have a pretty significant, uh, wastewater, uh, system improvement project that is, uh, right before us. And so continuing to ensure we have appropriate fund balance and, um, uh, coverage ratios, et cetera, in our sewer fund to make sure that we are, um, eligible for some of these exciting, uh, loan programs that we're applying for. And with that, uh, Doug and Zach from F C S.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tyler. I am Doug Gabbard with F C S group, and I am joined by my analyst Zach Hazel. It has been two months and two days since last we chatted about utility rates tonight. Tonight's going to be very short and sweet. I do want to give you an update on what the latest things have been going on, uh, with the W F I A application process and how that impacts sewer rates. I think, I think you're going to like what, what we've come up with. Um, when we last got together in April, uh, we were planning for the fifteen percent increase that we are in fact implementing tonight. And then beyond that, each year thereafter, uh, we were looking at fourteen percent, another fourteen percent, and then a twelve percent. That's where we last left it with you. Since then, there has been a lot of, uh, updating. Since then, there has been a lot of updating of assumptions and inputs, not all of which have been equally impactful, but I want to focus on the one recent change that is making a very important impact in a very positive direction. Up until recently, we have been operating under the assumption that the WIFIA loan could not be any larger than forty-nine percent of the total WIFIA project. It is now our understanding and, and there are, there are those who can speak more fluently about the programmatic aspects of this. But, but it is now understanding that we can go up to eighty-eight zero percent of the WIFIA project for the loan. Now, it's not so much that the interest rate is lower or the terms are, are more favorable or the maturity is better. What really moves the needle from a rate-making perspective on this is the ability to begin your debt service payments five years after the last disbursement of the WIFIA funds. So I direct your attention to the table that we've shown on the screen here. In row one zero eight shows this, the multi-year series of WIFIA loan proceeds going all the way out to fiscal twenty-six. That, that would be the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Now, if you look at that, that number, that twenty-four million dollar number, and if you then count over to the right, five columns, and then look down at the debt service row, which is row one twenty-one, you'll notice that that is the year where the debt service jumps up to the amount where you're actually repaying WIFIA loan. That five years of deferral is what really allows the WIFIA loan to give the rate payers a smoother ride. And so to the extent that we're able to take more advantage of that by going to an eighty percent loan as opposed to a forty-nine percent loan, that's to the, that's to the rate payer's advantage. And so for that reason, with, with that with other small refinements that were made, we are now forecasting after tonight's fifteen percent increase that will be implemented at the beginning of the new fiscal year, future increases should not be any higher than eight percent per year. So I think we can get you out of the double-digit business. All of this is of course subject to change because the inputs are changing all the time and we're always refining our analysis. But it does look quite favorable being able to displace other debt that would have had to be repaid right of way with debt that does not have to be repaid for five years after the, the last disbursement. Allows us to get a little more gentle climb to the rates that will eventually be needed. And that is really what I wanted to share with you to, to show you, explain why we have a little more gentle rate slope. We have several years of eight, eight percent after the initial fifteen percent, which will result in some savings to the rate pairs. I'm going to stop there and if there are questions, happy to chat.
Any questions? I see a hand up from Councilor Pete Sol.
Yeah, just as you speak about the WIFIA loan, we, just to clarify, we still haven't been approved for that WIFIA loan yet. That's just an assumption. Is that correct?
So, so approval is a, is a funny word. So it's a two-step process. There is, and, and by the way, if, if anyone on city staff, they, if they want to jump in on this, that's great. Law, I'll tell you, tell you what I know. It's a two-step process. There's a letter of interest and then there's a formal application. The letter of interest is, is the, is the real competitive part. And, and you won that competition. So, so now it's sort of yours to lose in the application process. But there is, there is an underlying assumption that if you go through all the steps and you, and you, everything checks out the way it should, you should get it after the application, if that makes sense. Does, does staff want to refine any of that?
Uh, no, you, you said it perfectly. And I think, you know, to, to touch on the eighty percent thing, because this is a big change and it is going to save rate pairs the money by able to, to do this longer deferment using eighty, up to eighty percent. What we learned is the next letter of interest process, small communities like Sandy would then be invited to submit a letter of interest that would have their loans go up to eighty percent of the total project cost. So we met with EPA and we said, hey, look, we already have a successful letter of interest. They initially said we would have to submit a new one, like for a small community and for these other, you know, four or five small communities. That's another big burden for us to reapply essentially and spend money doing that. Can you just lump us in with the new criteria to give us eighty percent? We sort of bent their arm and, and they said, they came back to us, said, okay, you convinced us. You can, you don't have to do a new letter of interest. You can apply under the new rules with eighty percent. So we save time and money just being able to getting, getting them to include us in that. So
So we, we, we can do up to eighty percent of the project now with the same, like, payment terms and stuff as under the old plan?
Yep. So the combination of that plus getting word from DEQ that they're going to use their state pool for our SRF funds. So we can use that as our local match essentially, part of that twenty percent of the rest of the project costs really, really helped the rate projections. And so now we're in conversations of what do we do with the remaining, you know, three million that we need as interim financing, you know, is it worth getting a revenue bond or can we squeak by without one? You know, will we get lucky with, you know, other sources of grant funding? So, you know, compared to what you saw a couple of months ago, the, the picture has gotten better and, you know, thanks to EPA for, for recognizing the, you know, the small communities and, and helping us out here because it did save us time. But thank you to our consultants too, that have been working on this and meeting regularly with the EPA and, and working with them on our application.
Perfect.
And my follow-up question would be, since we deferred the rate increase from last January to this meeting here, has that hurt us? Or could have potentially hurt us with the WIFIA loan process because they see that we weren't going forward with the plan that we had proposed to them originally?
So there, there's, there's two different axes of attack I can take in, in answering that question. I'll take, I'll take both of them. First of all, is the pure financial. You know, the pure, pure financial answer is, is did you, did you lose out on cash because you deferred that rate increase? And, and of course, yes, you did lose out on cash, but we, we believe we've accounted for that in the projections going forward from here. So so the projections from this point, take note of that. So that's the first answer. The second answer is, is this, this phrase that, that you sometimes hear on, on rate discipline where, where WIFIA wants, wants to have confidence that the, that the city council will implement the rates that are needed to get the job done. And, and I, I believe and, and my, my fellow consultants agree that if we can do everything that we can to make the rate increases as reasonable as possible, there is a far greater likelihood that they will actually get implemented. And so we're, we're trying to create a win-win situation here by making sure that we can get the rate increases as low as they can for the affordability of the rate payers. But in addition to that, to make sure that, that WIFIA and everyone can have a reasonable expectation that they will in fact be implemented.
Thank you. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, it is. Can you confirm, Jordan, what is it that is not funded with the expectations of where our sewer budget is at this point? And I get that it's out there and it could be increased or could be decreased depending on some of our possible options. But in terms of what we know now, can you confirm to me what it is we are still short of being able to finance still the difference between what increases in WIFIA, the grants, those kinds of things that we are pretty much in hand. What's, what's the difference? What's lacking?
And Doug, feel free to add or answer this question too, because with the eighty percent and our match, you know, needing twenty percent of other sources and that other source being SRF, we're really close in terms of having the programs that we need to fund the full, you know, I think the model shows seventy-nine million dollars right now for the full project. So I think the gap was at three, three million, right, is the number that's in the model of what we were, because initially this year, we were looking at a revenue bond of, what was it, eight million at one point, even more than that in the previous model? Yeah, so we whittled that down.
So let, let me, let me attack that from a slightly different direction. Counselor, you, you phrased it in, in terms of sort of what, what do we have to go without? And, and if I could sort of reframe that is we're, we're not going without anything. We're, we're going to do everything that, that needs to be done. The question is, how much other than WIFIA do you need to borrow in order to make that happen? And that is what is in, included in the rate model. And Zach, I don't know if you're able to put that, put that back up on the screen so that we can see that first year again. But you'll see that, that we have, that what is currently being modeled is for the, for the next fiscal year that begins July first. We have about fifteen million dollars total in non-WIFIA debt. And so that is what was needed in order to make all the, all the, the rest of the capital in the current, in the next fiscal year possible. So nothing, we're not going without any, you know, we're not deferring projects. We're getting, we're doing all the projects. But we are, we are having to borrow more than we are getting from WIFIA. Counselor, does that answer your question? Am I getting to it?
Yeah, both ways. I was thinking of both directions. What was going to be left out if we didn't make that, but what, how much money was? And it looks like that three million is pretty much the the issue there that needs to be brought up, which is very great. Love it. It's because we were talking more like, like you said, fifteen to twenty million. So I know that depends on what the alternatives net us out to in the long run. And if we have to do extra work or something comes overbid, but three million is a nice, nicer number than some of the others I've been hearing. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Doug or staff before I go into public testimony?
Before we go into public testimony, just one or two more pieces of information from me. Back in December, the council had, you know, requested that staff do some more outreach and notification to community members regarding the proposed rate increases. So letters, you know, have been sent previously to the top customers of water and sewer consumption, informing them of the past, you know, intent to increase rates. Since then, we've also notified this public hearing on Facebook, in the Sandy Source newsletter. And we've also talked about it at, I believe, two of the three budget committee meetings when Mike Walker presented the Public Works budgets. We, we highlighted that there would be projected rate increases coming before council as well. So there has been quite a bit of public outreach and, and trying to get the word out there and an opportunity for public comment regarding these. In addition to the, the public hearing that we're having tonight and extending through June twenty-first.
All right. Thank you. With that, let's go into public testimony for this. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have materials that you wish to be considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, if you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine and to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call for testimony. A reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll be provided three minutes each. Jeff will provide you with a twenty-second warning. Jeff, public comment.
Mayor, I'll just take a quick look at the list. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right. Thank you. Tyler, staff recap.
The, the proposed rate increases for the water sewer and stormwater budget or water sewer and stormwater rates rather are built into the twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-three biennial budget that's been approved or adopted rather earlier this evening, the parks use fee increases that we've projected are proposed will have a modest increase in parks rental revenue within the parks building and ground budget. Probably not noticeably enough to amend the budget in any way, but a little additional funding coming in there to pay for, you know, other maintenance expenses or whatever else may come up during the biennial.
Great. Thank you. With that, I will call for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second? There's a motion by Counselor Exner, a second.
Technical, don't we continue the public hearing?
We, we closed the public hearing tonight, but then I'm, I'm going to be calling for a motion to continue it to June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. We're just closing it for tonight. We're not closing the record.
Thank you.
Yep.
Actually, Mayor, I think that's a mistake in the script and I, I have to take ownership of that. I'm sorry. I, I think technically we should just, just vote to continue it. If, if that's, if that's the council's intention.
Oh, okay. Cool.
Sorry about that.
You had it figured out. That's no problem. All right. So with that, is there a discussion?
I move to continue the public hearing on June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. For further public comment.
Before there's a second, I just want to give an opportunity for any comments. Counselor Pete Sol.
I didn't, yeah, since we're not closing it, so I guess maybe this is the time I would speak up on discussion items on that. So the miscellaneous charges, I have an opinion on the Bornstead Park fee. And here's my scenario that I'm looking at because I was the liaison with the parks when we did the gazebo out back, but that's right next to City Hall. And I don't visit the, the park where Bornstead as much as when my kids were a little bit smaller and they should love that splash pad. And we needed this gazebo or structure out there, which I think is totally great. I think when discussions we had before it was, who's going to be maintaining that in the renting of that facility while other people are going to be there? Because when you look at the map, the area of you and you're out there, it kind of looks like you're kind of renting the splash pad too in that aspect of things. And so there's this, you know, someone be going out there and putting up a sign saying, no one can use this during these hours or not. It becomes a logistical thing as well as a technical debt thing on staff for maybe very small usage. But then when it does get rented and someone else is just there because it's sunny hot day using the tables, they're the ones having to go shoe them away. Or is that staff going to come shoe them away or park staff, staff do that? So the people that are renting it. I would propose that on that particular one, I agree with the other ones, is that it's a first come, first served and there isn't a rental on that particular one to get away from that. I think there's there's a lot more technical debt for our own staff and maintaining that plus logistics of the whole process. So that's my opinion on that one. I don't know if others share it or not, but I would recommend that one to be just removed from this miscellaneous charges.
Is that a frequent, is that a frequent problem?
I can foresee that being a frequent problem from
It's not in your head? Yes. Okay.
There are so many people, when my kids were there, let alone, I hear from other ones with small kids, that it's a very popular place. So anyways.
There are kids' birthday parties there and then who's, you know, who gets there and how much do they get? And it's a bit of an issue and our parks staff doesn't usually work the weekends when that would come up. But other than that, I have no opinion. I recuse myself.
And timing too, like, oh, you got it from one to three. Now someone else, you got to get out right. Yeah. I just think it's a, it's, it's something that maybe our staff, maybe it should just be a first come, first served like it, it has been.
All right. So with that, go ahead. Did he have any answer, Jordan? Go ahead. Yeah.
I was just, if there is, you know, consensus from the council, we could strike that when we bring it back on the twenty-first. The only answer I would have is, I think for the gazebo at Minut Park, we put up reserve signs. And our difficulty right now and, and just, you know, I, I totally appreciate the technical debt observation and the logistical challenges, especially on the weekends. You know, we've been having trouble getting a seasonal parks worker. And I think on the weekends is usually when we use that kind of, that labor. And so there is kind of
And so there is kind of an issue right now with monitoring those and, and getting staff schedules. So I do appreciate that. I think we were just trying to look at like parity of what we do with other, you know, places that are popular and maybe, you know, trying to avoid sort of those disputes as these places get more popular than Bornstead shelters are newer. So if we put that at the same kind of level as a gazebo, we put up signs or reserve or something, but totally understand it. We can, we can modify that and bring it back.
Yeah. I don't know. If there's reserve signs, I mean, I get there's possible problems, but I also know that as a family who wants to invite relatives and staff to birthday parties, sometimes it is nice to know that you've secured the location for your birthday party. Lori.
Yeah, just super quick, quick question. It looks like Chief Roberts, are you still listening or did he just disappear?
No, I am. I'm here.
A quick question and you don't need to answer it tonight. You can, you can get the information and send an email out later on in the week. I'm curious as to how much overtime you have spent with some of the goings on of people renting the Centennial Plaza. And wondering if we should adjust fee to account for that in the future. That's a lot of money. You're using a lot of your OT budget for some of that.
Well, in the recent past, it's been, you know, quite a bit of overtime used, but I can definitely get counsel and you a, you know, a figure on how much was used in the last, say, 12 months. Eighteen months would probably be a little better.
Okay.
It's definitely more than in the past, but.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. With that, we do have a motion to do a continuance of our meet public meet of this public hearing to their June 21st meeting. That is in person, by the way. Is there a second to that motion? There's a second from Counselor Smallwood. All right. So there's a motion by Counselor Hokinson and a second by Counselor Smallwood to continue our public hearing to June 21st, 2021, and we'll keep the record open for further public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye. Nay, no, or if you're against it, give me a nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries. All right. I think you're through your evening, Tyler. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Absolutely.
Question.
Yeah.
Maybe Tyler, but maybe it's Jordan. In terms of the folks that are behind still on their water and sewer payments, how are we doing in that? Are they still some people that are quite behind or are we pretty much all caught up?
Great question. I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of me, but when we resumed water shut offs in, what was that April? We had thirty five accounts that entered into a long-term payment arrangement with us. Either six or 12 months, nothing exceeding 12 months to get their account brought current. There is one customer outside of that that is working with the ant farm on some assistance that we are aware of. And that one is still, you know, significantly past due, but making progress to get current. So the short answer, thirty five accounts out of the four thousand plus that we have are, you know, on a payment arrangement. Otherwise, everything, you know, really worked out quite well. Didn't have the volume of shut offs that we expected. Most people entered into a payment arrangement, you know, before the shut off day. And we haven't been hearing much chatter from residents, you know, calling in with complaints or with, with concerns about our policies right now. So I wouldn't say we're in the clear, but we've definitely whittled down that past due balance significantly. And continuing to make progress every month.
Sounds like you have everybody is in some sort of form of getting caught back up again. It's just great.
Absolutely.
Love that. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Great. With that, let's move forward to our water supply options discussion and staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a, you know, a continuation of the conversation and discussion the council had a couple of weeks ago. You know, we, we had that, that opportunity to kind of present some information about what the bull run treatment options and purchase options were. Heard a lot of great questions and discussion that night. There was a couple of presentations. So it was a nice two hours that filled a lot of time and felt like there was still work to go and talking about this issue. And the plan still is to continue this to June 21st as well for a decision with regards to the issue. But what we wanted to do is assemble a report and kind of review some of the history with the city of Sandy and, and water sources and supply. You know, this has been an issue for the city. As you see dates back, you know, 20 years of looking at different water sources and are in the future of our water supply. And so I think, you know, we recognize we didn't do that enough justice when we presented the, the water master plan and the, and the bull run supply options at the last meeting. So we put together sort of a timeline, I think, and hopefully found those helpful. If you had a chance to look into it, you can click those links and look at a bunch of studies and different reports and analyses that were done back when the city was really looking at this in the early 2000s. And probably even before some of our time, you know, as the city continued to grow and look at different sources of water and securing water rights. But I, I think it's important to kind of get a sense of that history to kind of understand the path that has led us to where we are here today. And kind of those decisions that were made by, by councils in the past as they looked at, you know, different water supplies like the Salmon River and what the challenges were there, even the Sandy River. And, and looking at their groundwater buying from other communities partnering with the boring well system. So they, they looked extensively at all these different options. And ultimately the council in 2008, you know, made that decision following all these work sessions and public testimony to go ahead and partner and purchase water for 20 years from the Portland Water Bureau. And at that time, I think the council had very similar comments to what we heard the other night, right? Okay, we're signing this long-term agreement with the city of Portland. There is this sort of issue of crypto-spiridium that may be out there that we might have to deal with. We don't have as much control as, you know, we would with our own supply. But even then, you know, the council made the decision to, to go forward and, and go with the Portland Water Bureau Bull Run Supply. And with that came a, you know, extensive, extensive public investment. You had to build a pipeline to, to meet up with the Bull Run Water. And that wasn't constructed until 2013, I think is when it was completed. And I think it was, you know, at least eleven million dollars to build that pipeline. So that's a little bit more of that, you know, history. And I really do, I, I found it fascinating clicking on some of these reports and I'm sure there's more out there that we can dig and find more dating back in, in the history. But, you know, I think it's important to kind of understand that just to, you know, how did we get to this point? You know, faced with the decision to either build our own treatment facility or connect to city, city of Portland's expensive filtration project. And I think it was important too, to kind of hear those different perspectives from the, you know, the Cottrell Neighborhood Association and, and their involvement with that project and also the city of Portland to kind of understand what they're, you know, planning to do out there. For us, you know, looking at what to do with the Bull Run Water. You know, really we, we engaged with this work when the, the state said that we came under the same requirements that the city of Portland did with the crypto-superdium. That we were under order to do something about the Bull Run Water Supply. And we had to come up with an action plan and that action plan, you know, could include buying water from somewhere else, which we kind of, you know, did a high level look at. It can include treating our, our own, you know, Bull Run Water. You know, just buying the raw water from Portland or buying that, you know, highly filtered water from the city of Portland. And I think what we heard too that night was wanting to understand, you know, more about these other water sources that were looked at before and why they turned out to be dead ends. So again, why we kind of wanted to provide that information, but also as you see in the staff report, when we get to the recommendations, you know, there may be some more opportunity to explore the groundwater a little bit more. You'll see in the reports, you know, kind of the work that was done and looking at the Trapdale Aquifer and, and the opportunities there. And at the time, they kind of felt like it was a little more of a risk and, and legal questions and water, water rights and being able to you know, secure enough water. But I don't think there was ever any drilling and, you know, those studies were done over, you know, a decade ago, if not more. So, you know, maybe it's you know, worth time to kind of think about engaging with some of those well owners or seeing what the supply is today or what those legal complications might be in, in getting our own groundwater source. You know, at that it could come with a cost, both of constructing that and, and then a pipeline. But, you know, that analysis would still need to be done. But in terms of the recommendations, what, you know, we presented on a few weeks ago was, you know, coming down to that option of, you know, do you want to build a pipeline to the new filtration plant notify Portland and Oregon Drinking Water Services that that's a decision or are we going to notify them that we will treat our own? There is time, you know, in between both when you know, we need to construct any improvements, but also, you know, enter into a new agreement with Portland. So there is time to do more studies and explore, like I said, you know, groundwater options. I think we have a few years until we need to tell Portland if we're going to, you know, have another long-term agreement. And it really, the decision in front of council on the 21st is, you know, a decision saying, here's our, here's our plan, you know, well, if we study anything more, we can change our plan. We just need to tell them what we're going to do about the Bull Run Supply at this time. And so we've, we looked at the numbers. That's what our consultants presented was that it, it is cheaper. The numbers as they stand now is it looks to be cheaper to build our own plant and I, I probably, you probably had the same question as I did if you looked at those numbers. Why 75 years? That's a long time to project out costs. Is that even relevant? But both that 30 year mark and 75 year mark, it is cheaper to have our own plant. And I think it also addresses, addresses some of the concerns of council of us having more control over our infrastructure and our rates. And that option of what kind of treatment do we do? You know, you don't have to do the full filtration. You could do the UV or other options that we can, can look at before we construct the project. So that, that's how we get to that recommendation. And again, like I said, the, we're obligated to inform our action plan for how we're going to deal with the, the requirements for treating crypto-spiridium. And that's either connecting to Portland's plant or building our own. And like I said, we have time between that and when we need to construct those improvements or buy or enter to a new agreement to, you know, do more studies or take other paths if the council chooses. I, I do hope that the background is, is helpful, you know, and we're, we're happy to have a conversation. You know, Mike has a lot of institutional history on the work that's been done in the past. And, and, you know, I know a couple of counselors that were kind of involved with those prior conversations and decisions. You know, maybe inherited it it was coming to a close in, in 2008, nine, and then inherited these expensive projects, just like councils are going to inherit other projects too from, from other counselors. So I'll open up to questions and if, if Mike, you have anything to add any of that. But really any questions that you have, we're, we're happy to take them tonight, continue them, answer them on the 21st. And, you know, we presented a couple of different options there. And like I said, there, if the council wishes, we can also look at adding on, you know, looking at further studies with groundwater, if you think that's worth exploring further.
Well, well, thank you, Jordan. I thought that, and to staff for putting together the staff report. I thought it was a really strong report this time and a really good presentation. Thank you for that. I guess what I would just start off by saying is your hand up, Don, is, is you guys, I mean, the staff, you know, staff report lays it out pretty well. You know, in the short term, we don't have very many good options. The SAM is just not going to be a real good option. And I like how it's kind of, you know, put out what that, you know, while we're telling the city of Portland, kind of what our plan is, we also have this opportunity to investigate. You know, our underground aquifers and different opportunities as well. So as it's laid out, you know, I'm not like in love. I don't think any of us are in love with the idea of, you know, doing too much business with Portland, but I do think that this is a very well thought out kind of path forward. Kind of in the, at least through the, the short term. Don, go ahead.
That, that's it. Exactly. This is a great report. This is the options. This is the history. This is really starts to get at what I was really poking at both Portland and staff in our last meeting. So I just say it. I mean, I, I very much in favor of controlling our own destiny wherever possible where the numbers are that close. And even less, there's just a lot to be said for taking the option, building our own treatment plant, leveraging our own infrastructure wherever we can. And I do like the idea of keeping that option for looking for additional groundwater on the table. Because climate change, global warming, call it what you want, it's going to get drier. And someday it'll get wetter, but between now and then water is going to be a hot commodity and having as many sources as we can is going to position us in a good spot.
Yeah, I guess that's the only thing I'd add on to that is, you know, I was just in Klamath Falls on Saturday. Let's not, let's not mess with our water. You know, I mean, if there's anything we want to get right here, you know, let's, let's get our water right. So. With that, we're going to continue our, this conversation to the June 21st meeting. Was there anything that anybody want? It is 9:31. So don't feel like you need to add to the conversation, please. But was there anything anyone wanted to add before we move forward? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And again, thank you staff for that report this evening. Very good.
I did want to point out one thing, Mr. Mayor. Jeff Prati really did most of the heavy lifting on his staff report. The, the ICOMP system only lets you, you can't have two people be responsible for staff report. So Jeff kindly put my name on there, but he did the vast majority of this research and he actually looked at the documents instead of having to rely on my rather easy memory of things of the distant, distant past. So do you want to point that out?
That's great. Jeff's, Jeff's outstanding. Just don't ask him to do a US flag at the beginning of a meeting, but.
Yeah, you had to throw that in there.
No way. You're outstanding, Jeff.
Thank you, Mike.
I still love you, Jeff.
All right. With that, Jordan, you don't get out of this spotlight that easily. A report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things, June 21st is coming upon us soon. So let us know if there's any logisticals, if you want to come in in advance. I, you know, we'll, we'll send out some more information on how it's all going to work with this virtual sort of hybrid option on June 21st. But I think Jeff, we're going to test it out some more tomorrow and see how that goes. But I think it's, I think it's going to be neat. To see, you know, that we're all hoping here's a COVID update that by then we will be out of this whole vaccination mask thing. They'll make it all easier on our lives for how we deal with that. Cause right now we're, you know, currently falling, having to follow that state policy of requiring proof of vaccination or requiring masks. And, you know, so we're, if you've seen us in City Hall, for those of us that are vaccinated, we're, we're maskless and, you know, kind of back to normal operations. And, you know, asking folks to volunteer vaccination proof if they don't want to wear a mask. We felt that was better to have that option than requiring everybody to continue to wear a mask. But the projections currently are, I think between the 21st and the 30th, we should know if the state's going to hit 70% on getting at least one dose. So.
That said, as, as the person who's the charter allows to run the meeting, I will not be kicking out any counselors who decide not to wear a mask.
I heard, so speaking of other emergencies, not a pandemic, but something we dealt with last year with wildfires. So I, those comments well received tonight about planning for that. And actually we've already set up a meeting next week with police and fire chief, myself to start talking about planning. I think it was a 95 degree day the other day that I started to have this moment of panic of what happened last year. So we, we want to get together and start thinking about this and but, you know, that's in terms of emergency planning, but comments about building codes and all that are important too. And, you know, obviously things that we should be working on, but we are, you know, anticipating things to be dry. And I think I sent a note around about PGE's public safety shut off areas. And I'm trying to get a little bit more information about that, but it looks like they extended their zone one, which is, you know, the Mount Hood corridor into parts of the city proper. So we would be impacted by, you know, anytime they need to shut that off because of high wind or heat. Which, you know, obviously that raises questions. Counselor Peaceful.
Yeah, I had looked at the map and my one question, and I don't know if you have an answer for it would be they put it in a section, are they able to just turn the power off on just that section? Or is it going to be a breaker? Because my understanding of the way the power lines work when the power goes out over this area, it's a bigger, broader area with inside the city limits than what they've put on the map. So if they shut that off, it's going to take out maybe a quarter of our power. So that's why I like to question that. That's all.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm going to try to get more information and maybe even see if we can have someone come in and give us an update on that because we would be impacted. We're an urban area. That's going to be in. They've expanded other zones or actually added zones now. So I had a lot of the same questions like this. This area doesn't look like it, you know, has a, any rhyme or reason to it. But.
So can I, can I touch on that?
So can I can I touch on that? So traditionally, when they shut power off, they shut it off from from where the starting point is on that main. So anything beyond that main would be off. Unfortunately, when your power goes off, they can't control where a tree limb lands. And sometimes it's in the middle of something and so it reaches out to a broader area. So my, since we do quite a bit of that with them, my assumption would be that wherever that ending point is for that map, that's a main for them and everything beyond that would be off. But I don't work for PGE, so definitely double check.
And then the, I think you saw a couple memos from Tyler a week or two ago. One of them is concerning the Public Arts Advisory Board. And, you know, my recommendation on that is, you probably read in the memo, there's a couple of different options, is that we pause the recruitment. I think if you just look at the the agendas that we have right now and the number of council goals and priorities and the amount of committees we're failing right now. I I do have a concern about, you know, sort of our ability to, you know, give them the full support they need for a new board to start up and and start a master plan. You know, I'm looking at it, maybe asking if we can get maybe six months to kind of pause that. Maybe we engage with the, you know, the council has the option of pointing the people that have applied now. And maybe we engage with them on developing a, you know, sort of a shorter action plan once we get a full committee. But I do have concerns about being able to staff that right now, given our, you know, the the current situation in community services and sort of the the other priorities we're working on right now. That was my recommendation. If the council wants us to to continue recruitment and fill the board, of course, we'll do that. You know, we just wanted to kind of put those options on the table and, you know, kind of see where this falls in the priorities with other stuff that's going on. I think Council Exner probably has something to say.
I was just going to say, can I just make a quick statement? I I agree with a lot of what you just said, Jordan. I think that there is a logic to be able to say, let's hold for a bit. If we're not going to be able to support the committee, then why put them into more stress? Because really, we've got through a period of some considerable stress already. And I think some of the reason why we didn't get enough applicants to fill the committee out was because of the tension that we had this previous year. And so I would I would hesitate to put them into a position where they're again stressed, feeling like they aren't supported, don't feel like they're part of the city yet. So with that, I've also had a couple of people come to me and say, I missed the application date. Can I put my name in? And I I would suggest that maybe we could do something like what you say is work on working slowly towards a fulfillment of the committee and maybe look for some of those folks that maybe didn't make it on the aquatic committee. There's some quality people that were there and maybe we can look around some more. So there may be some other options, but I I kind of agree with you. Let's not give them any more frustrations. Let's put them on a good heading and get them ready to work. So I'd recommend that too.
Thank you. And Don. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for your time. I all in my report there. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, Counselor Sheldon. Committee and Counselor Reports.
Yeah, I'm sorry. For whatever reason, my camera won't come on. I really don't have much today. I want to thank all the staff and everything for some awesome presentations tonight. Felt like it's some of the best that I've seen since I've been on council. So thank you for that. Other than that, the Planning Commission is going to kind of things slow down a little bit from the summer. And so there's not much to report from there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Exner.
Oh, surprise me. Really, I'm just going to keep it kind of personal right now. So Jeremy, sit up straight there. This is a lot about the Sandy Dip. I'm currently, if you can see behind me, I'm currently stationed in my garage at the point. It's the only place left over that hasn't got a quiet little spot for internet. My four grandchildren came from Taiwan just three days ago by surprise. Taiwan is going through a horrendous COVID thing and that's not the point. The point is, is that my two oldest grandkids are, as we speak, on the internet to Taiwan, speaking in a larger context, we are here. My oldest granddaughter is talking to sixty of her fellow classmates. She's fifth grade and a couple of teachers. And the same time, my nine year old granddaughter is speaking to about forty or so of her classmates and a couple of teachers at the same time we're doing this. What an amazing world we live in. Can't believe it. These kids are going to speaking on a real time basis to people on Taiwan while we're doing all this. It's amazing. So that's what's going on right now and a couple of minor domestic crises happen while I'm sitting here. Like broken glass sitting over here about about three feet away while we were busy. So great evening. Appreciate that. I'm looking forward to a in person meeting though. I really am. So anyway, that's it. All I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just, first of all, thanks to what everybody else said about the great staff work done tonight. And also, I wanted to, I I came across a video of the Bend new community aquatic center, a little video on that. It just opened up, I believe, in end of April, early May in Bend. It's called Lark Spur and it's basically they took their old senior center and expanded it with a an aquatic center and it's now the Community Aquatic Center in Bend. And it's fabulous. And there's a short video, less than five minutes long on the, you know, if you just Google Lark Spur Community Center in Bend, you'll get the video. I really encourage you to look at it. Twenty three million dollars for that. And I was just shocked. I don't even understand why where the, you know, seventy million or whatever the price tag was came on ours because that's got everything I would love to see. I, we are working on the task force for the community campus. And, you know, we kind of heard the direction about the name of the task force. And we are just kind of going to be working with the group to kind of, you know, look at what the scope of our analysis is. I'm going to be real upfront and kind of let you know that I'm, I'm, I think, probably not the only one who wants to look at beyond just reopening the old pool, but also look at other alternatives. And like I said, this Lark Spur has a, has a great, gives me hope. And then lastly, the, again, I'm so thrilled to see the Mass, the Parks and Trails Master Plan. It's just been a long time coming and it's just like this, the longest gestation period to see it finally getting delivered. The one kind of probably addition that I would like to see on that is that they did a great job of doing some local parks plans for Ponder, which is the Bailey Meadows Park, Deer Point and Champion Way. Two things. One is I want to make sure that we're able to get the other half of the Deer Point Park with whatever develops there. And I've mentioned that to Jordan. And second of all, the last thing that they did was we did a lot of surveys, public surveys for the Parks and Trails Master Plan regarding the community campus, parks and trails. And and there was a lot of, you know, kind of re re refining of the priorities of what people would like to see there, pump tracks and that kind of stuff. But the actual site specific plan never got changed from what was originally done with the Opsys Walker Macy folks. And so I I will be kind of hoping for some sort of a kind of a refinement of the more site specific plan for the community campus, parks and trails, part of that to reflect the public comment that we got as part of the master planning process. Other than that, it's fabulous plan and I can't wait to start implementing. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hokinson.
I think everything's been said. Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Smallwood.
I got nothing.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pete Sold. You're going to make it, they're going to make us feel like real jerks for docking, aren't they?
I won't try to talk too much, but I didn't talk much last time, so I thought I might say something. I thank you for sharing that, Kathleen. I'm actually headed over there in a couple of weeks. And I just Googled it on a map and then I'm already planning to drive by, spy through the windows, maybe. Don't tell anyone. Anyway, but yeah, that looks really encouraging. Wow. Pictures are great. We had a Economic Development Committee meeting last week and I think summer has hit. And Zoom sessions aren't popular when it's nice and warm, things to do outside. And this happens every year. And so we just want to be cautious about probably our our summer type meetings that they may be low in popularity on that. But in that same note, we did have some great conversation and Kathleen, I saw you, you were there. Audience there as well. But we started talking about the master plan aspect of it. And we did have the the person that came and presented to the council about the zone change down in industrial in Champion here a couple of months ago, come and present his plan there. And that was nice to see again. But so that went on this last week. And thank you, staff, for digging up some of the archives. I was the counselor on staff that I helped was part of. It was one of those things I got on council and now we're dealing with water. You guys got on council or dealing a sewer, so. But I don't know which is cleaner. It's all messy. But, you know, we held our nose on that one back then and rereading it brought back a lot of memories. I have the same frustrations I had back then, no good options. But back then, as well as being exploring, and I think we have been given a good, fair representation of what was going on back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, nine timeframe. So I do appreciate all of that. So anyways, there's a lot more, but want to thank Tyler for hurting us on the biz budget committee there. Great job in finishing that up. And I won't ask you had that champagne or not. Just keep it to yourself and but thank you so much because, you know, we've been through a lot of these and I know that it was a challenge and did great. Appreciate that. And then also with the whole parks, I mean, at the parks, but the in the committee with this earlier this morning or today, oh, like this morning, with the Planning Commission. I know we need to have more of those. I know we all get busy on that and it's hard to get so many people together. But I think there is a bigger work session that can happen next time on that. But we started the ball rolling in the right direction. So leave it at that.
All right. Thank you. I'd also like to thank our Planning Commission for joining us today. And and to your point, Jeremy, hopefully the next one can be in person. I think it would lend more of that back and forth that I think we're all kind of wanting out of that discussion as well. Also, congratulations to Tyler, both Tyler and Jordan, but especially you, Tyler, and get through another budget process. I know that's a really big deal and you did everybody, did a really good job. So thank you. I'm very excited to get back to in person meetings here in our next meeting. I just can't even, man, you know, in some ways it feels like yesterday we did our first one of these and in some ways it feels like decades ago. But, you know, we've kind of made it through and this is our next big step to kind of opening back up. And I'm looking forward to kind of seeing you all and having our conversations in person. With that, you know, I have, let me start with this. So as I've been traveling the state on this listening deal, the one thing I have heard that's really paid a big deal as mayor is is, you know, we're not the only community that gets complaints about our planning department. Everywhere I go, it's like, you know, if you're the next guy, what can you do about our planning department? So it's in every community, you know, across the state. That said, I have been hearing from some that they're ready for us to get more to a similar semblance of normal with our office hours for our staff at City Hall. And the truth is, it's been mentioned, obviously, the guidelines are changing more and more every day. But heck, guys, you know, I'm under the, well, I only get to say this for about another week or so. I'm under the age of forty, really healthy, and I've been able to get fully vaccinated. The vaccine is readily available for everybody who wants it. And the, you know, we're opening back up now and, you know, as a as their local government, we need to also show leadership. Part of what we do is leadership up. And so I do think we need to take a much heavier look at getting back to a resemblance of normal at City Hall. And we need to get closer to more normal office hours and our developers and our constituents deserve the right to have access to City Hall for in person meetings. They do. Okay, with that, I wanted to also announce that I'm appointing Counselor Lori Smallwood as our liaison for our camp, our comp plan process. So thank you, Counselor Smallwood, for agreeing to do that. CamoCon is back. It's been announced CamoCon Saturday, November twentieth. So that's very exciting. We're getting back more resemblance of normal there. And then on a final note, I got to spend Mackenzie's birthday with all of you tonight. So thank you to Mackenzie for, you know, as part of the gig, you know, being mayor and stuff. And thank you for your continued patience with this kind of stuff. But happy birthday, honey. Love you very much.
I got one to, I got, I spent and the grand opening of the library on my wife's birthday. So I gave my wife a library.
Okay, okay, okay.
Council soon. Should we soon?
Yeah, we we spent our ten year anniversary at the Oregon Mayor's Association Conference. It's true love, guys. All right. Well, it's getting late. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. And looking forward to seeing you all in person here real soon. I'll join the meeting.
Good night, everyone. In a few weeks.